3:30, hold a 20-minute break, and then come back. If we go as scheduled, that would actually allow Mark Spanioli to actually present the sidewalk update. There could be a break before council would discuss. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you have any council members have any questions or any feedback on that? I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
I think that's a great plan, Martha. Thank you. I just want to clarify, when Town Manager mentioned that there would be business taking place outside of this meeting, it is not town-related business. It is non-town-related that one council member needs to take care of. So just wanted to be really clear about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella.
Martha, I didn't catch the whole thing. Can you repeat it, please, for me?
Yes, sir. Simply stated is, the request is to consider moving the scheduled break time from approximately 3:00 to 3:30, and staff would find the appropriate stopping place in a presentation or in-between at that time, if, as best possible.
Okay, yeah. I was, I scheduled the meeting based on the present break time, so, let me see if I can move. Otherwise, I may need to be excused for 15 minutes. Okay, when it comes, I'll let you know.
Seeing no other comments, I think we'll try to be flexible and try to make that move to 3:30, given the fact that some people had already made plans, given the scheduled break. I believe that's about where we are right now. Final comments on that, Town Manager Page, or anything else to add before we go to Assistant Manager Zudema?
No, sir. I'd go ahead and adopt the agenda before you go to Brandon. Formally adopt the agenda.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to formally adopt the agenda. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I make a motion that we formally adopt the agenda.
Okay, I've recognized Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the retreat agenda. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do the roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rau.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to adopt the agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Brandon Zudema, Assistant Town Manager, who will kick us off with a review of retreat meeting logistics.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm not going to read this logistics sheet to you. It is in the front of your binder, but just want to hit some highlights for you to prepare us to get moving through the next three days. As a reminder, we would ask you to keep your cameras on, in the interest of transparency, anytime you are not on a break. Those breaks will be 20 minutes, and we will make sure that that is adhered to. Again, appreciate your flexibility in that regard, allowing us to extend those breaks a little bit. As a reminder, this is being broadcast on the town's website, and we would respectfully ask that any other work or devices be set aside, so that everyone can be focused on the presentations, and more importantly, the discussion that will be had over the next three days. If you do need to step away during the meeting, please indicate that you're doing so in your chat box, and certainly turn your camera and microphone off, and then let folks know when you are back. With that, would encourage you to continue to use the chat box only for communications, and to indicate you have a comment or a question. Please do not use the raise hand unless you absolutely have to, as we don't know necessarily how that falls versus chat box in terms of sequencing, to give everyone their fair turn. And we will ask our staff, as we go through this, to manage each of their presentations. I'll speak more to that in a second. And we will let each, if it's okay, mayor of our presenters make a determination if they'd like to take questions as they go, or if, depending on the nature of the presentation, if it's better to get through the presentation and then move to Q and A. But we would like to encourage that you allow staff to monitor the chat box, so that you can be equally engaged with your fellow councilmembers as we proceed through each of these presentations. You'll recall, we took that approach last year and had a lot of success with that at retreat.
I concur. Sounds like a good plan.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Would remind you politely that the chat box is public record. Ask you only use that for formal meeting communications. Please avoid any off-topic conversation that might occur in the chat box. Also, we are fully intending to stay on schedule. You've heard a little discussion today about modifying that to accommodate a change in break. Outside of that, you have a full agenda for the next three days. If for any reason you finish early, we will go right into the next item, or if it's at the end of the day, potentially finish the day earlier. If it requires more time than is allotted during our current schedule, we'll give you some options or suggestions as to how you might address that situation in regards to either modifying the schedule, if absolutely necessary, or continuing a topic to a future work session that we might hold. Also, would remind you two sort of follow-up points. One is that we will have staff keeping up with an FAQ document, so whether that is answered at the end of the presentation, or if there are follow-ups to be had, and that will be reviewed with you before we leave each presentation. And then finally, staff will also be maintaining a parking lot list of items that might come up during conversation that aren't directly on point for the topic, and then we will schedule those for a future meeting or work session with your consensus at the end of the meetings this weekend. With that, happy to take any questions you might have.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rau, please.
Steve, Steve, you're on mute.
Sorry. The, for the camera, do you want cameras on the whole time? Because I can't see everyone right now, and sometimes I take it off, but do you want the cameras on the whole time?
That is our preference, in the interest of the transparency of the sessions, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Assistant Town Manager or staff? Okay, back to you, Mr. Zudema.
That is what I have, Mayor. I believe when we are ready to transition over to our first update, which is Aaron Hudson, the Strategic Planning Manager and Connect Morrisville, you'll find those materials behind Tab 1 in your retreat.
Okay, thank you very much. I would now recognize Aaron Hudson, our Strategic Performance Manager, to begin the content of our retreat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Good to be with you this afternoon. I'm going to request control here, so that I can move through the presentation with you. We will be covering an update of the Connect Morrisville strategic plan this afternoon. So I'm going to go through some objectives with you. Today, we'll begin with a quick recap and strategic plan update of the action plan, picking up where we left off in October. We'll cover the initial revision process begun by staff and some preliminary recommendations that we have developed. The majority of our time will be dedicated to hearing council's input and discussion, and we've provided some target questions that will help facilitate, which are outlined on Slide 13. We'll wrap up with an updated action plan timeline, and that is also provided in large copy printout in your binders. My portion of the presentation will take about 10 to 15 minutes, and if you'll hold your questions until we get to your discussion portion, I think that would probably be the most helpful format. So if you'll remember, our first plan was adopted April 24th of 2018 through a robust engagement process. It involved commitment of elected officials, Morrisville community, and staff. It was an intense amount of work in that plan development. That work still continues today. Town Council gave staff the green light to begin the revision planning process, and that was at your October 27th work session. During that meeting, we talked a little bit about how we tell our story, and so that remains a continued point of emphasis for us. So Connect Morrisville is a community plan, and it's branded for easy identification. It has a unique mark and logo, but it's not so specific that it can't be recognized as Morrisville. Through employee launch, all new employees hear about our plan, what it means to the town, how their work aligns, and they receive some swag pictured in the above-right image as a reminder that they're all part of the puzzle, and they all help to Connect Morrisville. Next, you see an image of the council and staff priority initiatives, signified in green, showing productive work, and yellow showing some ongoing work. And those priority initiatives were identified by council and staff near the adoption of the plan in 2018. The bottom image is the briefing item Objective Alignment, and you'll recall, these are for action items approved by council. Other elements not specifically scheduled for action are captured in our strategic plan software and can be viewed on Morrisville Pro at any time. These are cumulative totals of about 147 items tracked from January 2019 to January of 2021. Left to right, we've highlighted those objectives with around 20% alignment or higher, so I'll quickly just read through and identify those that are marked. Objective 1.2 at 18%, leverage resources through partnerships with other government entities and the private sector. Objective 2.2 at 21%, create a sense of place through insightful development that balances commercial and residential growth. Objective 2.5 at 28%, plan and provide for current and future infrastructure. Objective 3.4 at 22%, provide opportunities for meaningful public engagement and collaboration. Objective 5.2 at 22%, deliver customer-focused service. And Objective 5.5 at 19%, align priorities with resources. The newest component to telling our story is the Morrisville Pro Community Dashboard. It's updated quarterly, showcases our organizational plan data, major projects, and department plan briefing books. Our department plans, which is the image you see at the bottom, can be accessed through a drop-down list linked to Morrisville Pro. The department plans are a hyperlinked PDF document showcasing department-level work as aligned to our organizational plan elements. Our capital projects, also available via link to drop-down list, won't show every project in the town, but they do show major funded projects in action with identified milestones. Here, I also want to highlight some of the activities of the Performance Measures Advisory Committee. Excuse me. As you'll see when you start reviewing the 2021 work plans and charter this weekend, they are seeking some enhanced and creative ways to engage with departments related to performance and metrics, so I think we're going to see some unique opportunities come from there. So when the original plan was developed, it relied heavily on in-person engagement and feedback. As a matter of fact, we had over 330 members of the Morrisville community show up to provide input, and that's over 10% of our population at that time. So we know that that is largely not possible right now, due to some restrictions on gathering size and social distancing, and most importantly, we want everyone to be safe. So when council provided staff direction to begin a revision process, we knew that we would review and recommend some areas to revise, excluding the mission, vision, core values, and goals. But before we talk about some of those areas, we want to talk a little bit about who we'll partner with, and what some of those preliminary recommendations from staff will be. So here are just a couple of examples that will be included in our engagement plan, highlighted above. And we will share messaging across a variety of platforms. We're going to work closely with our communications team, and we're really going to aim engagement back to our unique email or a specific survey group, because we want to be sure that we capture the most accurate response data. So we're really trying to drive those to specific avenues. It's a community-wide and staff engagement effort that's going to follow the council retreat this weekend and our discussion here today. Based on the direction provided by council in October, staff has taken some time to begin reviewing the overall plan performance, using the considerations outlined in the screen you see before you and the next slide. We really want to look at a number of things. We want to see how our plan is currently performing, based on department and organizational plan performance data. We'll look at survey data. We know that that played a large role in the original plan development, and we're going to look to that data again for this process. The National Citizen Survey is a statistically significant survey, meaning there was enough response to accurately represent the population sample being surveyed. It also captured historical trend data. Some of the questions asked respondents to answer in terms of three- to five-year visions, and that aligns with some of our previous discussion around what plan length we might envision for the future. We did a little bit of comparative analysis as well. We reviewed other local government agency plans, what items they might have included, what they might have omitted, how they were organized, just to see how they compared with Connect Morrisville. Our feedback process is essentially beginning here with you today, and we will be distributing a survey to staff and reaching out to the community over the next several following We have considered each element of the organizational plan and developed some first-pass recommendations, knowing that council, staff, and the community feedback will impact all recommendations. We'll plan for work session discussion once all input has been received and analyzed. That's likely going to be in April, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in our timeline update at the end. Our aim is to see the plan steer away from operations and really focus on strategy, big picture, long-range, and visionary goals. Much if not all related operational information will be tracked in our department-level plans, available on Morrisville Pro, and that was highlighted for you on Slide 10. We want to rely on data, anywhere that we have it available, to update our plan, where it's known and showing performance over time. We don't want to be overly wordy or complex. We want to simplify and avoid complex jargon that we may have included. We want to remove outdated and completed elements. We want to reword any of those elements that are overly specific. Combine those elements that are similar and create larger, broader items or categories. We have some focused evaluation areas that we want to look at. Sorry about that. The focused evaluation areas, we want to review and revise those elements that have maintained an assigned status in our tracking software of future data or no information for four or more quarters. Essentially, what that means is that we have some elements that we programmed into our initial plan, knowing that they would be coming in the future, or that we want to detract them in the future, and that future point in time simply just hasn't occurred. And we need to take a look at those specifically and further evaluate them. A consistent feedback item is that it can be difficult to follow from a goal to an objective to an outcome measure or initiative, because they may not always align, so we're really seeking to be able to make those connections where possible. The blue box on the right side really shows some major takeaways for this slide. We want to aim for elements that are strategic to be the focus of the organizational strategic plan. Operational elements and specifics can be captured and defined in our department plans. We want to focus on what is most meaningful, powerful, and has applicable metrics to track. If we aren't regularly measuring or don't have a method to track or capture, then we want to steer away from including that as a guiding element within our organizational So now, we'll transition towards our discussion and input. We did feel it was important to review sort of a where we came from, to help us see where we're headed. Our adopted plan from 2018 gave us a new mission, vision, four core values, 27 objectives, 32 initiatives, and 29 outcome measures. That is a very large, first-ever strategic plan. And based on what we've covered in the last few slides, we can likely stream that detail and streamline that detail, and really develop a plan that speaks to the core of Morrisville as an organization and as a community. So the matrix that you see before you showcases some of the collected feedback from 2015 to 2018, some of those core questions that were asked, and the responses that were received. All of this data was used in the development of Connect Morrisville. This is where we identified some words and themes that reoccurred over that four-year collection timeframe, and that really helped us in formulating Connect Morrisville. As mentioned, staff has shared some of our preliminary recommendations, but we really want to know council's thoughts and feelings on what is most important to you. Considering this feedback and what we have just shared over the last few slides, think about how you responded to some of these questions on the screen in front of you three to five years ago, maybe how you would respond today. How might your responses be different? So we want to take the time to have a little bit of discussion about that. So essentially, what we would like to do is have staff kind of read the prompts through with you, and allow for council discussion, and staff will capture. We want to look at each of our six planned goals and descriptions, so that's number one through six, take about 60 seconds or so, and type any words into the chat log that come to mind related to that goal and description. So sort of a similar exercise, as was used to develop Connect Morrisville originally. After that 60 seconds has lapsed, staff is going to read those aloud for anyone who's viewing, and for us to be able to capture those. And then we want to take about 10 minutes and discuss each one, and then we'll move on to questions seven and eight. So just as a reminder, we do not have plans to revise the mission, vision, core values or goals. This is really just some word association for us to be able to capture your thoughts and your feelings. So let me just check in with everybody and see if there's any initial questions prior to getting started with this process. I don't see any. Brandon, I think I can, I think I can take it, but if you want to just be my backup, I think that would be great, if you want to help monitor the chat box as well.
Got it. Got it.
Thank you. Okay, so we will get started with number one. So I'll just read it, and then if you'll take a few seconds, and everybody just respond in the chat box, what words come to your mind, thoughts, images. So the goal is improve transportation mobility, and the description is enhance transportation options through improved accessibility, connectivity, and collaboration. I didn't even get my timer started. All right, 10 more seconds. Last ideas. So I'm going to go through, and I'm just going to read everything that you all shared, because that's exactly what we wanted. It's very free-form, and we just want to know what your thoughts are. So associated with goal number one, these are the words or images that come to mind for council. Road projects, shuttle bus, greenways, road improvements. If I've said it once already, I won't repeat it, if that's okay. Transit option, bus, bike lanes, funding options, major capital road improvement projects, bus sidewalk, bicycles, public transit orphan sidewalks, Wi-Fi road connections, traffic, smart shuttle, McCrimmon Extension, bus service, which I think I may have said twice, improved road construction, smart lights carry system, wider roads, bike path, multimodal, traffic intersection and signal adjustment, improved intersections, train crossings, more roundabouts with four exclamation points, incremental improvements, commuter rail station, 54 widening grade separations from McCrimmon and Airport Boulevards, McCrimmon and Davis, electric vehicles. So I only said it once, but greenways appeared a lot, so that's just food for thought. Reminder that the chat log is public record, but again, just in transparency for anyone watching at home today, we just wanted to be able to share that for ease of viewing. So Mayor, councilmembers, if you all would want to take 10 minutes or so, kind of discuss what you shared, any additional thoughts, staff is happy to capture that discussion before we move on to the next. Mayor, you're muted.
Understood. As this is your part of the presentation, would you like to recognize, or would you like me to recognize for this discussion?
I'll take my lead from you. Whatever works easiest for you, I'm happy to do.
Okay, I'll give it a try, and we'll see how that goes. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please, first, and then Councilmember Rau.
Thank you. Aaron, I appreciate all of the slides about the strategic plan, but I still struggle with connecting some of our major initiatives with that plan, and maybe the connections aren't as transparent to the user or the viewer as it is to you and the staff. But I'm struggling to find major initiatives, like Morrisville Carpenter Road. We are investing a significant amount of our money and staffing and resources to achieve this number-one initiative. Also, our shuttle that we're working on. So those two things I'm not seeing in the initiatives or the goals, and although they're very specific, they are impacting our town a significant amount. And so how are we going to kind of educate our community if we're not highlighting some of the major areas that we're working on today?
If I could interject, and then I'll recognize Ms. Hudson. I think that's kind of the discussion that we're going to have around questions seven and eight, more big picture. I think that right now, we're going to go through the first six items and just speak directly towards those.
Right. So number one, I'm not seeing the road projects in this initiative. This initiative is transportation. That's relevant, this topic. I want to see the road projects.
Right. I understand what you're saying. Was there anything that people did not share during this brainstorming that you want to see on there, or you want to comment on anything that was said about transportation mobility?
Everything I wrote included road projects. I'm just, I'm seeing road projects, not just greenways. We need to have something a little more detailed, not just so high level, so.
Right. Understood. Ms. Hudson, did you want to react to that statement, and then the rest of us all have a chance to talk to the actual item?
So I think what we can accomplish will probably reach those. So I think we can do a couple of things to show more of that direct alignment. So that's actually one of the comments that were shared in the October work session, is that it's really difficult to see alignment from this goal to an objective or initiative for a specific project, because they may not have that linear alignment, and that's one of the things we want to improve. Number two is, we need to really... Number two is, we need to really probably do more work around sharing how our residents, our council, our staff can see and understand about those projects that we have that are going on as being strategic initiatives as well. So, not just as a major project or a capital project, but how that really ties back to our strategic plan. So, I think if I'm hearing and understanding, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson correctly, she wants to see that strategic alignment really identified as well. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if I'm understanding correctly, or if I'm not, please let me know.
Right, I mean, we don't need to have small projects identified directly, but we're spending millions and millions of dollars on a lot of these large projects. It's important for us to appreciate and understand, but it's also important for the public to have that transparency, so that, I'm really pushing for that, because I'd like to help our public appreciate what we're doing in the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rau, followed by Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
So, I want to just say that I want to completely concur with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I think it's very important for us to do what we can to show the progress of the projects we're investing a lot of money in for transparency, because, you know, and a lot of the stuff I've listed was road projects, McCrimmon, Morrisville Carpenter Road, smart shuttle. And I think it's so important for the public to know the progress that we're making. You know, when we approve developments, for example, I always look at these bullet points on any decision we make to make sure that we're making decisions on what we've advanced in one of these areas. And so, you know, I get concerned when people are emailing us from the public, and they're saying that the council's not doing anything on roads, which is simply not true when you look at the amount of money over the last decade that we've invested. So, I think moving forward, we need to make sure that we're working with communications as well to add those projects in here and convey that to the public. And we could talk big-picture stuff at the end, because, you know, I think we, as a council, could do a better job of making sure that we track our progress during the year under these big buckets to say, okay, what are the things we've done, and what are the things we want to do, you know, in these areas? But I thank Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson for bringing that point up.
Mayor Pretend Johnson.
So, I'll just echo the last two comments. I think we have to be really important about making sure we do align the projects with each of these overarching goals. But just to get me back to where we are, Erin, what are you looking for from us right now? Remind me, you just want us to give our, some input onto the actual topic, and in this case, it's improving transportation mobility? What are you looking for?
Yes, ma'am. So, for right now, just very similar to what we did a few years back, so word association. What does this goal and this description bring to mind? If it's a specific road project, if it's a specific vision for the town and for what you envision for transportation mobility, what that looks like to you. Any of that, we want to take back and we want to capture. We can, again, talk a little bit more specifics as well, but please feel free to share whatever it is that has come to mind, but probably in seven and eight, we can certainly jump into more of those specific topics.
Okay, good. Okay, so, you just want to verify that we're still kind of in agreement on what the goal, overarching goal is, and the objectives behind it. So, all right, I'll give you, so, I'll give you, I'll give you my, and tell me if this is what you're looking for. If not what you're looking for, you let me know. When it comes to our improved transportation mobility, I think the solutions have to be multimodal. There can't be just one solution. You know, over the years, I have always said, we cannot pave our way out of our transportation and congestion problems. And we've seen that when transportation planners have come in and showed us what we need to do to widen NC 54, or even to widen Davis Drive to be able to handle the volume of traffic during rush hour. And those six and eight and 10 lanes at the intersections of pavement is, I think, detrimental to our community. So, I think the solution to our congestion and transportation problems, again, are multimodal. We need to have a really vibrant transit option. We need to have our commuter rail. We need to have bus, enhanced bus service, which, these are all things that are in the works, so I'm not, and we all know that. And as we've heard, greenway and sidewalks are incredibly important part of this puzzle to the solution. You know, when we look at the greenway project, the Cretree Greenway, we were able to receive a significant amount of funding through CMAC for that because of the enhancements to air quality, and we see folks using that greenway now in order to get to work. So, those are incredibly important, greenway and sidewalk to this. And then, the last thing I'm just going to say, when it comes to congestion, sometimes those small incremental changes at intersections, adding a turn lane, traffic signals that are tied into the flow of traffic during the morning and afternoon peak times, those incremental, small changes have significant impacts, so we can't lose sight of those as well. And then, and lastly, road connections. We have several roads that need to be connected to help with the flow of traffic here in Morrisville. So, those would be my comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize myself, followed by Councilmember Fender. So, when we did our little word cloud there, I didn't see much about collaboration. Mayor Pretend just mentioned that for the, had Cretree have to recreate greenway underneath the railroad and 54, collaboration was very important, as was funding from outside entities. So, I think that I just want to affirm that collaboration will continue to be really important for the town. For connectivity, we talked about a lot of specific projects, but I also want to say that in the big picture, you can pretty much get anywhere in a motorized vehicle, on the roads and cars. I would like to have that same connectivity sidewalks first, and then eventually through greenways and sidewalk connections, because once people can get everywhere they need to get on foot, and then by bike, then we're going to take more people off the roads in a safe manner. So, I'd like to see connectivity go beyond just roadways into our side paths and our greenways. So, and affirm everything else that everyone brainstormed. I thought everything was really great. Councilmember Fender, please.
I agree with a lot of what Mayor Pretend Johnson spoke about, is that we're not going to pave our way out of our traffic congestion problem. I just wanted to highlight here that topic about transportation mobility and, you know, Connect Morrisville is just so integral in our identity as a town, specifically given our location in the Triangle, so close to RTP and the airport, that this topic is just so crucial to, you know, our progress and the identity of our town. I have lost my train of thought. You know, I agree with what Mayor Pretend is saying about, I mean, we definitely need to continue the work we're doing with, you know, road infrastructure, like with widening Morrisville Carpenter. We do need to continue to work on sidewalks and greenways. And, you know, one of the things, though, that I think is a gap in that area, and I will highlight, like, the public transit, like specifically the smart shuttle that we're working through with GoCarry. I do think there is a gap in what we're doing, all of these initiatives, the smart shuttle, Morrisville Carpenter Road widening project, our greenways. There's a gap between that and educating our residents in what's available. I don't know, I think it's wonderful that people are using the greenways to get to work. I'm not, I would think that if we could communicate that availability more, that that may be, come to mind more easily to our residents. I don't think it's like forefront in their mind that we can use the greenway to get to work, or even go get groceries. I think there's a gap there, just in our communication.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Great points. Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I also think that no matter what we do, when you talk about expanding the greenways and even sidewalks and road projects, I think that the key is funding, and I would like to see us being even more aggressive in going after grants, especially for our greenway and park projects. I think that we might be able to take a significant amount of the lift off of our budget, and even off of our bond, if we sought out high-quality grants to augment our existing greenway system. It would be great to get Breckenridge connected into the greenway system in some kind of meaningful way, and, you know, I think that's, you know, that's a, that's something that might take a road project, or even, I'm just trying to think, even like a flyover to make happen, but would connect Breckenridge to the rest of the greenway. So, you know, I don't, I think that we should leave all the options on the table in terms of connectivity, and I think that we should be as creative as possible in our funding of that connectivity.
Did anyone else want to share on topic one before Ms. Hudson takes us to topic two? Okay, seeing none, I pass it back to Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for your comments there. So, we're going to move on to number two, and it is thriving livable neighborhoods. And that description is enrich the quality of life through the preservation of natural resources, wealth and development, and strengthen neighborhood vitality. Again, any words, images, thoughts that come to your mind associated there, and we'll go for about 60 seconds. Last 10 seconds. Okay, so, allow me a few moments to read through your responses. And Mayor, this time, if we can sort of think through what we've heard one another say, and try to think if there's anything missing from what is shared. Is there anything else we think needs to be included or stated? I think you all have some pretty clear shared visions, so just think through that as I read through your responses, so that we can sort of focus our discussion a little bit. So, we have trees, walkable, open space. I will go ahead and read duplicate answers, because now I'm afraid I'm going to leave somebody's response out. Trees, green space, natural forest, greenways, still, no clearcutting, gathering space, recreational areas, natural areas, parks, community hall, parks, HOA and town partnerships, natural areas to explore, town center gathering area, greenway connections to neighborhoods, green space, trees, open space, rec facilities, parks for gathering, garden, green space, HOA engagement, pocket parks, 15-minute walk to a park, transit stops in or near neighborhoods, neighborhood watch, national night out, shared playgrounds, dog parks, arts and other cultural events by town, and dog park. So, Mayor, I will turn it back to you to facilitate that conversation.
Okay, so, 60 seconds goes pretty quickly. Did any of what you just heard make something else bubble up in regards to thriving livable neighborhoods? I recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
So, one thing we didn't, and if we did, I missed it, one thing we didn't talk about was the affordability. You know, we talked about affordable housing. I didn't hear that come up here at all, so I don't want to lose that. And not only affordable housing, but the different, what's the right word? Somebody will give me the right word. The different levels of housing, or the different.
Housing stock.
Yeah, the different housing stock, the different housing stock that's available for someone throughout their life. You know, when somebody's starting out, they may, they, all they can afford is an apartment, but then when they go from the apartment, they want to, for me, I went from an apartment to a townhouse, to then being able to afford a home. And now, you know, maybe one day going back, you know, to a townhouse and then to an apartment. So, it's kind of a circle of life, but just making sure that we have a variety of housing stock. Thank you, Vicky.
Excellent. Councilmember Rau, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, if she wanted to make a comment.
Well, one of the things that I was thinking about is, you know, as we look at the preservation of natural resources and, you know, just the quality of life, and I really want to give a shout-out to Councilmember Fender, she's talked a lot about sustainability. Does sustainability, you know, fit her into all these different categories? Because, you know, this was adopted a few years ago, and since that time, climate change has become even more of a problem. You know, President Biden adopted John Kerry on the National Security Council, and there's this big initiative of having net-zero carbon emissions in the next, you know, nine, 12 years. And, you know, just things like in terms of, you know, just the kinds of things we're doing, you know, we just talked about mobility, about electric cars, you know, reducing, you know, like, you know, carbon emissions from cement, you know, the way development is done, you know, lighting, but these go through multiple categories. So, I don't see that as a major goal, but I think it's very important, not only for Morrisville, every city across the state, the country, is dealing with policies that affect the quality of life with sustainability. So, maybe that's an open-ended question for the end, but I just, when I see natural resources, thriving livable neighborhoods, I think, you know, sustainability as well.
Yeah, Councilmember Rau, I think that's really important. I think that that's an overarching lens through which we can view everything, sustainability, and more recently, equity, which has always been important to us, but is more on the national scene now. So, I think that's a good point. The sustainability wasn't mentioned, but I think it is important as part of this and all the other topics. Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I think, I think Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson was in there first, Mayor.
Yeah, but then she put comment afterwards, so.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm recognizing you first, thank you.
Oh, okay. So, I agree 100% with Councilmember Rau. I think that sustainability goes through all of these categories, and in fact, I would go so far as to say that I would like to capture for each of these things, how sustainability and equity can be achieved under each of these goals. So, sustainability, I think that we can start with, you know, with asking, when people come before us with a project, whether it's housing, or retail, or whatever it is, you know, what is, what are the sustainability factors that they're taking into account? Are there solar panels on the roof? Are they using, are they using fairly sourced materials? Are they, you know? Are they, you know, I think that if, that us asking those questions will let people know that these are our values and that, you know, and it'll prepare people that are bringing future projects before us, like, you know, hey, they're going to ask you about solar panels, just say they're solar, but just put solar panels on the roof and save yourself some trouble, you know? So, I think that, I do think that part of thriving livable neighborhoods is having clean air, clean water, reduced carbon footprint wherever we have the chance. And part of equity, to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's point earlier, part of equity is affordability. So, I think that, you know, I do think that we should be more, looking more at affordable housing than I feel like we currently are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Mayor Pretem Johnson and Councilmember Robati. The variety of housing stock is important for our, I guess, our livability in the town of Mooresville. Over time, we become in balance, and we have to rebalance it, but a lot of our naturally occurring affordable housing goes away when we redevelop, and that is something that we're seeing very rapidly in the town. So, to restate that we would like to have affordable housing is a good thing because it puts it top of mind, and it also recognizes that as we develop, we do lose that naturally affordable product. One thing that I think we omitted that is essential to our livability is creating our sense of place. We don't have, like, art, or culture, or sculptures around town, and we don't have a downtown. So, what is Mooresville? How do you know you're in Mooresville? What is that sense of place that we want to make sure that our community aligns with? And it's not very easy to do today, but this is a strategic discussion, so we should be thinking about that, and perhaps that could be another discussion for another time. But the sense of place is very critical for Mooresville. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I just want to thank Councilmember Rao for bringing up sustainability. I think that was a lot of what was on all of our minds when we spoke about trees, open space, gardening, but to bring it all under one umbrella, sustainability is very important. And like Councilmember Robati, I believe, was alluding to, it would be good if that message of sustainability could become more integral in our conversations with individuals that come before the planning department or the council to, you know, for resuming requests or, and for development. That, that, where am I going? That topic needs to be more integral in just our everyday talking with these developers. The idea of solar panels, what are you doing about using sustainable materials, all of those types of things are more important, and we need to keep those in the forefront of our mind. Just wanted to touch on the affordable or workforce housing that Mayor Pretem Johnson and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson have spoken about. I just want to throw out there because I think a lot of times when we talk about affordable housing, everyone thinks apartments. And for me, I think there's an option out there that affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean apartments, it can mean homes. And I think we need to remember that and promote homeownership for the workforce housing. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, I'd love you to say what you put in chat.
Oh, I said that part of thriving livable neighborhoods has to be schools, that, you know, it's hard for a neighborhood to be thriving and livable if kids are leaving the house at 7:00 in the morning and coming back at 5:00 in the afternoon because their school is an hour bus ride away. So, I think that schools are always going to factor into any discussion of thriving neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you very much. And to, my comment is going off of what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson said about the sense of place, I think it's important to continue to build a pride of place. I know Mayor Pretem likes to hashtag MSB Proud and our Live Connected, Live Well. I think as we really think of ourselves as a community and keep on building the sense that we're one community, I think that will go a long way to make all our neighborhoods thriving and livable. Also, if we can do some more interneighborhood vitality, when we do our national night out, we go to the separate neighborhoods, but maybe in the future, we can combine neighborhoods or have more neighborhoods doing events with each other in tandem to try to get a little bit more, building a larger community. We all think of the neighborhood we live in as where we live, but let's try to build that, make that bigger. So, those are just some thoughts I had on this topic. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella now, please.
Yeah, saying in the same, in a different way, I think we really need a gathering place, you know, where we really don't have one right now. Like, we have the Church Street Park, but, you know, that's only to play, but really to gather or have events or even a community where, a multipurpose facility where we can say, yeah, this is my town, things happen here, you know, that's, you know, I think we are lacking that. And so, it would be good to promote, I don't want us to going somewhere to carry our DURAM or RTP to get that. That has been one thing which has really been missing for this community. And the other thing is, schools is, you know, as Ann said, it's a choice, right? You know, my son goes one hour because it's a choice of the school, that, you know, magnet schools are all in the inner belt, and he prefers to go there because there are more options there. So, like, every family has, you know, different options, but at least we have that options from Wake County Public Schools to pick our choices of schools based on the curriculum, you know, each kid wants to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Garamella, I'd love to just dig in a little bit more. I don't see any of the comments right now. So, when you're talking about a place to gather, are you thinking more like an indoor, like, Bond Park Senior Center, or more like Booth Amphitheater, a big place? What's your vision?
My vision is more multipurpose, right? Like, you know, say, say something like a mini net sports, where there are a lot of basketball courts, or, you know, you can use it for different purposes, you can use it for volleyball, and, or like a community center, more like a Cedar Falls Community Center, which is big, that can host multi-things, that people can go there and enjoy. So, that we can use it for town purposes, people can rent it, because every time we go out to do all that things, and there's really not sufficient space, and including the town, right? Like, you know, Martha has said that too, you know, if entire town staff needs to meet, they're meeting right now in the, I think, Fire Station 2, there, where the fire trucks are. So, where is that place that we can give them, you know, to go and socialize?
Okay, because I know some vision for the town center might have a community center, so that might meet the need. Councilmember Rao.
Well, yeah, I just was specifically joking tennis center, but I mean, just, you know, having more recreational places as well incorporated into a gathering space facility, I think would be very important to have a sense of place. The other thing is that, you know, I think, well, this really gets into a later topic, but I think, one thing I think that could give us, I've got some ideas I want to share with the council later, but I think the history of Mooresville, the Civil War, the Pugh House, Mabel Pugh was an artist, I think these things can actually help us promote a sense of place that would encourage more options for people that live in Mooresville to learn about this town, providing a unique opportunity to address bringing in tourism as the way to boost our economy. And we could talk about that later, but, you know, I think that we need to have a place that incorporates all this. So, maybe a center would have arts and history and recreation, kind of a one-stop-shop that would give people that great experience when they come to Mooresville, which would there be for the people living here and the people that are working here as well.
This is a great discussion. Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So, I just want to echo this idea of a sense of place. I think this is really important, that everybody's referenced, and I think indoor place and outdoor place. I think, I look at the work that we recently did across from, or right by the Indian Creek Trailhead with the stormwater facility that we recently built there, and, you know, clearly we need a couple of more years for the landscaping to grow in, and, but that's going to be a beautiful place for folks to gather. Now, clearly, that's for more walking than gathering in big bunches, but I think the town center and the idea of a town green where we can all gather is going to be really important. So, I just want to echo and just kind of, you know, second, everything that's been said about a sense of place is critically important.
That sounds great. You mentioned the Town Hall, I mean, the Town Hall Drive Stormwater Facility, and if you look closely, there will be a nice M, so that might be kind of iconic. So, we're still looking for what is our iconic vision and for Mooresville. At this time, we might be wrapping this one up. I'll recognize Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor. Great conversation, and don't want to stifle this, just want to get us a little bit back on track because we are quickly running out of our time slot. So, if I may suggest a little bit of a modification to what we've done, if I can shorten our time period to offer feedback to about 45 seconds for the next four topics, because I think you may want to have a little more discussion for seven and eight, and some of that you actually may have already covered. And then I will also probably keep you to the roughly 10-minute or so discussion for the next few topics because we've gone a good bit over, and I just want to be respectful of everybody's time today if that's agreeable.
Yeah, do you just put in chat we're at 10 minutes, and then we'll be wrapping up more quickly? So, I wasn't watching the clock on that.
No, no, you're fine. Like I said, I didn't, I didn't want to stifle the good conversation, but do just want to be able for you all to have good conversation and productive discussion today. So, for number three, engaged inclusive community, and that description is enrich the quality of life through programs, events, amenities, and services valued by the community. Go ahead and put your words that come to mind, topics, your vision for that one in the chat box. We've got 45 seconds. I'll read through those when we're done, and you'll just take an opportunity to see if there's anything that hasn't been mentioned, or if there's anything missing, and then we'll try to keep moving through these. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read through these and summarize, and then once I'm done, if anyone thinks of any ideas that haven't been shared, then let's go ahead and have those discussed, and then we'll move on to number four. So, for engaged inclusive community, we have dog park, senior center, festivals, dog park, theater, expanded public garden, cultural events, open-air theater, senior center, festivals, Pride Parade, all-age programming, indoor and outdoor exercise and cultural activities, murals around town, festivals, more cultural programs, sharing our cultures, getting more neighborhoods engaged with our work, our decisions, et cetera, affordable housing, 5K, history of town or future, MAFC, expanded programming, events, gatherings when able, and museums. Anything that comes to mind that was not included or shared there? Art Walk. I'll see, Mayor Pretem has a comment.
The only thing I want, I can't, I can't type this, I don't know how to put it quick enough to type it. When we talk about engage community, I don't want to lose the fact that all these programs engage our community, but I want to make sure we're also engaging the community in all the work that we're doing. And I will tell you now that everything, all our, not everything, but all our advisory committee meetings are on Facebook Live, and folks can now really hear what's going on in town very easily. So, I don't want to lose the fact that there are multiple ways to engage the community in multiple avenues. You know, we can email folks, we can have things online for them to view, we can engage them in, using different methods. I just want to make sure we've not lost that either.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Rao has a comment as well.
Yeah, I think my only comment is, you know, one thing is, in terms of inclusive community, Councilmember Garamella, a few years ago, had a great idea about how we have so many different cultures in Mooresville, and so, having more events that engage all the different communities and, like, international festivals. Councilmember Robati mentioned a museum, maybe having some kind of a place in the town where every month we could have people learning about the different cultures, you know, Chinese New Year, Diwali, many of the different festivities. In terms of engaging the community, and I love history, I think that's another thing I've been thinking about a lot recently. And then, you know, finally, when in terms of engaging the community, I mean, we have over, you know, 85 neighborhoods and communities in Mooresville, and I'd like to see them, maybe they are engaged, but when we made decisions, we're normally hearing from just a few neighborhoods. So, you know, really making efforts to make sure that we're letting people know about the work we're doing, you know, maybe they're happy and they're fine, and we don't hear from them, but, you know, I just feel like there needs to be a really effort now that we're growing, continuing to grow as a town, that we are creating that kind of interactivity with our council, letting them know the ways they can get involved. And maybe that's already happening, but I'd like to hear from more different neighborhoods across Mooresville.
See, a couple more ideas that got entered, and I may have already read this, I apologize. Artist, Art Walk, staff and resident interactions, partner with the new library, and Councilmember Fender has a comment.
I just wanted to add means of engagement, and it kind of flows into number four that we're going to talk about, but a lot of the events that the Mooresville Police Department does with the community is, supports that, our effort of having an engaged, inclusive community as well. And I think our police department does a really good job in their outreach program to kids and to the neighborhoods and all the residents.
Are there any others that you all see are missing or have come to mind from the list that has been shared? Councilmember Robati?
You know, I think that there are some things, honestly, that we could do right now to further along this topic. Like, I don't think it would be very expensive to put together an art walk through our, in our local shopping centers, and it wouldn't even have to be indoors. I know they're usually indoors, but it wouldn't even have to be indoors. And Juneteenth program could be very inexpensive. It doesn't, like, a lot of these, these cultural... It doesn't, like, a lot of these cultural things that we're talking about, I think that we would find willing partners in the community to do them. And, you know, I think that we just have to indicate our willingness, and I think that people will step forward from the community and say, "I'm hooked in with a community of local artists. You know, if you give us the space, we'll put together an art walk," or, you know, it's like a town scavenger hunt, or, I mean, I don't know, but there is, I think there are programming ideas that if we think outside the box, everything doesn't have to cost tons of money. I think that things can be engaging and still cheap. Thank you.
Are there any others? Town scavenger hunt has been added. All right, not seeing any other activity for this item in the chat log, we'll move on to number four, and that one is public safety readiness, and that description is provide a safe and secure community through prevention, education, readiness, and response. Take 45 seconds, let us know what words or images that conjures for you. All right, I will read your responses for number four, and then as I read through these, you think about anything that's missing or anything you don't hear that you think needs to be included. We have CERT, Neighborhood Watch, low crime, police outreach, emotional and psychological safety, and anti-racism, traffic safety and identified routes when major roads are blocked, CERT using open data and analytics to help us in crime prevention, red ladder trucks, education, feel safe anywhere in town, text alerts to block roads or traffic jams, education with lock your cars, night walks, take back the night, public safety look up and status of issues raised by residents, lighted greenways, proactive, Community Hero Day, HOA interactions, Neighborhood Watch, CERT, new fire stations and EMS, visible patrol officers. Does anything else come to mind outside of what has been mentioned here? Any other topics or words or elements or visions for public safety readiness, safe and secure community that you think of that hasn't been shared? Disaster readiness, collaboration, floods, hurricanes, et cetera? Vaccines, good communication about vaccine availability? I'll recognize Councilmember Fender for a comment.
Yeah, so that brought to mind, I have a quick question. I think the answer would be yes, but are all our first responders, our police fired fighters, have they received a vaccine?
I do not have the answer to that question.
Yeah, this is Martha.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I can give you a quick answer. Our firefighters were in Group One. The town itself did not require any staff as a part of its employment to get a vaccine. We did have approximately 75% of our firefighters that have both vaccines at that point, at least the last time I checked, and now our police have been able to obtain vaccines, and reports are that there has been a good desire to get those vaccines.
Okay, but they're still in the process of their, between their first and second?
Believe police is, fire is complete with both vaccines.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments, any other ideas for this one? All right, okay, Councilmember Rao.
Yep, I just wanted, when I mentioned climate change, I was just referring to, you know, the increased rain events, public safeness in terms of more hurricanes, more storms, resiliency. You know, once again, I just think that, I've been reading a lot more about this issue lately, just because of everything going on around the country, but I think it is going to really be something we need to be ready for in terms of more weather events over the next few years, in terms of just public safety readiness, more storms. I think that that's going to have to factor in, whether it's the state budget, city budgets, county budgets, moving forward.
Okay, we will move on to number, oh, no, Councilmember Robati.
I do just want to bubble up this idea of emotional and psychological safety, and being anti-racist in nature, not just not racist, but anti-racist, and just really being willing to call ourselves out on those points, and making sure that we're really living
Trying not to rush here, I think there might be a little bit of a delay, so just want to give folks time. All right, we will move on to number five. That is operational excellence. The description is deliver exceptional service with an engaged workforce that effectively manages public assets and promotes transparency. So take 45 seconds, put your ideas, your words, your visions into the chat. All right, that 45 seconds went by fast. All right, I'll go ahead and start reading through these, and if anything additional comes to mind that you're not hearing, feel free to throw that into the chat box, and I'll read those too. We have AAA financial rating, electric vehicles, excuse me, do the bond projects in a timely manner, smart city, excellent ERP system, better salaries and bonuses for staff, diverse workforce, improved website search capability, professional development opportunities, follow-through, ability to retain our staff, implicit bias training, hire the best, electric vehicle staff retention, customer first, continued support of families, affordable housing, bias, implicit bias training, recruit and retain the best, affordable house, knowing what's great about working in Morrisville and put it in every job ad. Anything that comes to mind or jumps out that has not been mentioned and shared here? When we think about operational excellence. We've added getting the best bids on capital projects, continuing education and growth opportunities for staff, invest in our people, effective budgeting. I see Councilmember Robati has a comment.
Yeah, just when everybody's done putting in ideas, I don't want to stifle the creativity.
You're okay, I'll read them in between as we get through them.
Okay, I wanted to say that we're going to have a great opportunity to showcase operational excellence if we get a bond approved by the public. I think that we should have as many projects as possible shovel-ready or bid-ready, or, and we should be able to demonstrate to the public that we're effectively managing the bond that they allowed us to get, and that we're being good stewards of the money, and that great things for Morrisville are coming out of it. I think that that is going to be, I think that's going to be a really good opportunity for us to come together and, staff and council pull together and really demonstrate excellence.
Recognize Councilmember Garamella?
No, I think we need to commend the staff, Martha. You know, when I started in 2015, things were different, where, you know, all the input that we gave to planning and zoning, permits, requests, I think the staff has done an excellent job digitizing it, everything online, and by increasing efficiency, using one software, you know, so that all the planning and fire and the engineering are using to it, and obviously appointing the CTO, and then working on open data. I think we have come a long, long, long way, and I think I need to call that out, because I really see these are all trends of, you know, promoting transparency, and I think kudos to the staff and Martha and their leadership.
Well, also adding to that, and just again, give credit where it's due, and that is to the phenomenal staff we have in Morrisville.
We've also added a few more to our list. We have improved website to find information easier and open data. I'll recognize Mayor Protim Johnson.
So, thank you, Satish, for saying that. I agree wholeheartedly, and I know we're always so focused on the work to come, and how we want to continually improve and get better, that we forget to stop and look backwards sometimes, and to see how far we've come. And I got to tell you, I could spend the weekend telling you how far we have come in just about every single department in this organization. So thank you for, Satish, for saying that. It's important that we remember the good work that we have done, and recognize that. And of course, you know, the work's never done. There's many challenges that we still face, and we continually want to do more. So anyhow, thank you, Satish, for saying that, I appreciate it. And we do have a great staff. I wholeheartedly agree with that.
We've also added commitment to continuous improvement across all departments. Anything else we want to add to our list, or any additional comments on number five? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move us to number six, and that one is economic prosperity. And that description is promote a business-friendly environment to diversify the economic base and create job opportunities for an educated, ready workforce. So take 45 seconds, go ahead and throw your ideas in the chat box. All right, I will start reading through our responses for number six, and if you think of anything that's missing as I read through, feel free to add it in our chat box. Partner with Wake Tech for aligned workforce, working with Chamber, town-sponsored Chamber memberships for minority-owned businesses, advocacy plan to address education needs for all residents, continue to recruit companies focused on entrepreneurship programs, housing to support those who work here, tourism, housing, Morrisville Small Business Saturday, Comms Department Business of the Week, Wake Tech High School collaborations, Morrisville Chamber, East meets West Festival, increased council and business community events, working with Wake Tech, small business partnering, Wake Tech, entrepreneurship grants by town, internships, Wake Tech, Chamber relationships strong, Business Fair. Any other ideas, words, elements that come to mind that were not mentioned or shared Councilmember Rao?
Well, I think that when we look at economic prosperity, the only, just a comment, I think these are all great ideas, and I think we have such a great opportunity in Morrisville to continue to recruit great companies. I think we could be the number-one tech and life sciences company, we're already well on our way, we've seen increasing momentum there. And I think when we make decisions as a council, it's important also to educate the public that our approval of development, if done well and smart, can actually promote economic prosperity. Because, you know, the fact of the matter is, if you look at some of the companies in Morrisville, we have 10% of the public companies headquartered in Morrisville, Lenovo, Cisco, Oracle, 500 Jobs, you know, Cineos Health, 1500, and these companies are growing. And as we bring in new companies, we have to have housing that supports that. I think that's an opportunity for us, because otherwise, they're going to go live somewhere else. And I think, you know, history and tourism is a way to diversify our economic base, you know, leveraging assets like the Pew House, leveraging our Civil War history, which we did a few years ago, could give us a sense of place, bring dollars in, cricket tournaments, which we've talked about, recreation, that can do economic prosperity, and then, and Robati hit a good point about grants for entrepreneurs. You know, I think, you know, John Kane building a $2 billion innovation district in North Raleigh at North Hills, we ought to have an innovation district here in Morrisville, you know, so we can get more grants and more money, and then connect those entrepreneurs with these companies. So just some food for thought in terms of, you know, how we can really develop a playbook that can help Morrisville push even further ahead of the competition.
Thank you. We've also added internships to our list, and I'll recognize Mayor Protim Johnson.
So I got a quick comment, but Steve's comments triggered something important that I want to make sure I kind of repeat. If we're going to be so focused on bringing jobs to Morrisville, and we're going to be okay with more commercial development, then we really need to think about how that's going to affect our traffic situation. If we are not willing to, at the same time, offer some housing opportunities, we have just added more con... just added more congestion and more, put more pressure on the roads that we have. And so, I think that's really important as we talk about the future of this town to recognize that. So, I appreciate him saying that. I just wanted to reiterate that. But the comment I really wanted to make had more to do with the ratio of the residential and commercial tax rate. I think that's really important, too. We are the envy of surrounding communities because of our strong commercial tax base. And that has helped us tremendously in being able to fund a lot of the amenities that we offer across town to both our business community and to our residential communities. So, and you know, we've talked about this over the years, what's the ideal ratio between commercial and residential? And I don't know what that is. I think, you know, we could debate that all weekend, too. But I think it's important to recognize that the commercial tax rate is, has been very beneficial to the town of Morrisville and enabled us to fund a lot of what we have. And, you know, it's, one more thing. The, we set a vision for what we want the town of Morrisville to look like and feel like in the future. But it's the development community that actually puts that on the ground. We can set the vision and then help the development community to build to that vision. And that needs to be recognized in this topic of economic prosperity, too.
Thank you. A few more. Leverage Wake Competition Center, hotel motel tax and grant opportunities through Wake County Economic Development. Any other ideas? All right, I'm not seeing any additional for number six. So, we'll move on to number seven and eight. And these are just more open discussion for you all. And we'll take about 10 minutes for each of those as well, just to be respectful again of my session time. And so, this is open discussion for you. So, once revised, how long would you see this plan carrying Morrisville into the future and achieving some of these strategic, long-term visionary goals? So, a little bit of context about that, when we initially adopted this plan in 2018, we didn't put a timestamp on it. However, we knew probably around that three-year mark, we would be doing a revision or an update, only because some of those elements that were included would be wrapping up or would be concluded at that time. So, really want to have some of that preliminary discussion with you all and get your input and feedback about how you would see this next iteration of the plan, how long you would see it going into the future before it needed to be updated again. So, I will look to the chat log for comments there. And I see Mayor Colley.
So, I think I'd be interested in an earlier check-in rather than later, maybe three years. Things are changing increasingly rapidly and our area will continue to change really quickly. As we come out of COVID, I think there's going to be lots of different opportunities and different challenges. So, I think we have lots of good programs and projects on the way now. I think we will hopefully have a bond referendum that's passed. We'll have some of those items in process. And I think three years would probably be an appropriate time to do another reach, check-in. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Manager Page.
Thank you, Erin. And I wish I'd been able to speak before the mayor, just to give some context, is as you consider and discuss this, when we launched this first-ever strategic plan, we allowed it to mature and grow. And you're really in your second, you know, you're coming into your third year of this plan, so you're ahead of that to revise and adapt, recognizing that things do change quickly and often. A three or a five does not mean you would never revisit, change, update, modify your plan. It just allows for the, I'll say, the scheduling and logic ordering of goals and initiatives to be represented over a three or a five year. It does not mean it would be cast in stone and never looked at again until that next mark.
That's 100% accurate. Councilmember Robati.
I'm not sure that we can go more than three to five years out. I mean, there might be an entirely different council by then. None of us may even be here. I, you know, I'm not sure what, like, I mean, can we really make a 10-year plan? The land use plan was a 10-year plan and, you know, that seems to me to have been too long for a strategic document like that. Like, I think we could have a long-range vision, but a plan, I think that we should go a little more short-term. Thank you.
Tim Manager Page.
Thank you, Councilmember Robati. You've raised an excellent point. And as you think about your strategic plan, you are being charged with the future vision of Morrisville. You are looking ahead and don't think of it as the next council could come in and completely wipe it out. Because so many of the things that you want to accomplish for the town take some time and take, there's long spans to plan for some of those things. So, again, just some context, I'm not trying to sway you either way, just the context of how a strategic plan is supposed to be used as a document to guide your work and our work.
Councilmember Fender.
I'm curious, when you say once revised, how long would you see this plan carrying Morrisville? Are you looking at to revise the current strategic plan right now based on our comment today?
So, we will not be revising like tomorrow, but we are going to use your feedback and we're going to be doing public engagement as well to get feedback from the community and from staff. And based on that and based on your input and direction from October, we will be revising a number of elements within the plan to give us an updated version to bring back to you for approval. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I guess, so with regards to that, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Robati, but I would think that the strategic plan needs to be revisited every year, just to see whether there's any refinement needed. Maybe not like a wholesale revision, but just each year, do, you know, do some tweaks and refinement.
Councilmember Rao.
I think that, you know, there's, there's, there's decades when nothing happens and then there's weeks when decades happen. I've heard that quote before. And if you look at the last, you know, before this document was approved, it was pre-pandemic, pre-COVID-19. And I think that there's just going to be a lot of things moving forward that where we have to address just a different world that we live in. You know, when you look at inclusive community, Councilmember Robati brought up bias and, you know, just making sure that we have anti-racist policies. I mean, that's what the leading municipality's task force is recommending. You know, economic prosperity, helping small businesses recover after the pandemic, although Morrisville continues to excel in terms of bringing in new companies. And of course, you know, addressing public safety readiness, just with more storms, frequent weather patterns changing. So, I think that, you know, the world seems to be, and you know, innovation is changing so fast in terms of the careers, the jobs. You know, I even think that there's, we've talked about sustainability. In my life, in the 10 years I've been in the council, I've been more focused on, you know, tech entrepreneurs, but I've been quite impressed with, you know, the amount of opportunities that are out there, you know, for, you know, people that want to promote sustainability, you know, social entrepreneurship, you know, like taking carbon out of cement, you know, how we're going to be developing in the future, plant-based meats, the way restaurants are going to look. I mean, these are going to happen, you know, in a few years, but I think a lot of this change, just in my observation, reading, is happening a lot quicker. And so, based on that, I think check-ins more frequently on the strategic plan to make sure that we're keeping up with this rapid change that's occurring around us in a very different world than it was five years ago.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
So, I agree. And I agree with Donna's comments about the, you know, maybe we do an annual high-level check-in, you know, and it could be at the retreat every year and it could be, you know, a quick check-in. But as far as how long we see this plan, can we do, can we say it's a three-to-five-year plan, give it a span of three to five years? And then, it's up to council to decide whether it's year three, year four, or year five to kind of revisit, wholesale revisiting? And then, I also agree, 10 years is too long. When we adopted the transportation plan, we said we would do a five-year check-in, that we recognized that 10 years was too long for that. So, you know, I don't know if that's helpful, but that would, those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Any other comments or ideas about a timeframe or how frequently you would like to take a look at it and take a look at the plan and review? Okay, so I'm going to take the silence as a no. And we'll move on to your last discussion prompt. And so, this one is just pretty free-form. So, this is really how you all feel that the current plan has performed over the last two and a half, almost three years. And, you know, what you see as pros, cons, what's jumped out to you, what you would like to see differently moving forward. It doesn't necessarily have to be a specific project or it can be a topic area. And so, really, the reason this question was last and not first is because some of the discussion and the ideas that you've already shared may sort of lead you to what you might want to see in the future versus what you may not have seen in these last few years. So, again, free form, will take about 10 minutes or so, and feel free to comment there. Put a note that you want to comment or have a question in the chat log and have a discussion about this as well. Councilmember Rao.
Well, if others want to chime in, I've been speaking a lot. I apologize for that. But I think that, first of all, I just want to give the staff a shout-out in terms of, I think this strategic plan has been excellent. And I've seen it over the years, over the last decade, really improve the focus of our staff. You know, for example, if you look at the Smart City Initiatives, how much we did by assessing that technology plan around our initiatives, getting a Smart City Steering Committee approved, all of the work that we're doing. I think it's accelerated that and got the staff more focused. Not be critical of the council, I know we're doing a great job, but I think we could do better. I think that we have very long meetings and I think that the meetings are good, but sometimes I feel like we get away from the big picture. And I'm just saying that I know I do. I'm not trying to point the finger at anybody when I say we, we're a body, we're a team. And so, I think we've got to push ourselves to create a culture in our city hall where we can really think in these categories and every day ask ourselves, the decisions that we make together as a team, is it advancing these areas? And sometimes, I don't know about you guys, but when I get out of a meeting at 11:00 at night, I'd like to, it's hard for me to remember, okay, what did I do and how does it fit into this? So, I think that's something that we can get better on constructively. And that's just my opinion. And you may not agree with me, but that's just how I feel. Thank you.
Mayor Colley.
Yeah, I want to share that this framework has been so important to get everyone on the same page. And then, when all agenda items refer back to this, it shows how each initiative is part of a whole, which is really important. In the beginning of your presentation, Ms. Hudson, you talked about trying to bring us big picture, go really up high. And I think that's really important. And I see Morrisville Pro as an opportunity to do that, but then also get down in the weeds a little bit and show the transparency that we're looking for. So, when we get down to the objectives and the actual initiatives, I would love to see the initiatives with a little bit more meat on the bone, like the Davis Drive and Parkside intersection improvement. I couldn't find that in Morrisville Pro, but that was a very important improvement for our town. So, I would like, I love Morrisville Pro. I love the concept. I would just like a little bit more meat on the bone, so our residents can do a search at high level on maybe that project or any other project that they're interested in. And it would be taken to the initiative level and then they could see how that connects in the plan. So, that's the one thing that I'm looking for a little bit more is to promote the transparency and the engagement with our residents by having Morrisville Pro be a really engaging tool that's easy to find things. So, that's my quick feedback, but the strategic plan in general, I think it's so important. We have these six goals that we've affirmed. And I think that that's really going to take us well into the future, especially if we do brief check-ins every year or so. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggich Johnson.
Thank you. I want to bring us back to the slide where you had the objective alignment. And I saw different alignments ranging from a little over 10% to 28%. And I wanted to get some clarity on that. Does that mean that you were able, through our body of work over the last three years, to associate the topics we discussed during council meetings or other types of meetings to those objectives in the strategic plan? Is that what we were looking at with that graph?
Yes. So, these are for action items only that were approved by town council. And this is for January 2019 to January 2021. And so, these are the elements within the strategic plan. When staff prepares that briefing item worksheet, where they check those items that align with the action item that they're submitting.
Okay.
So, this is, yeah, so showcasing that alignment.
Yes, that's really helpful. I appreciate that. I might miss that during your regular presentation.
That's okay.
But I think when we're looking at this plan, I almost want a scorecard for myself. It's not only are the activities that we're approving through our motions and other things, but it's like, you know, if the set of objectives or initiatives in transportation, do we want that to associate with 15% of our program of work through the year? You know, is there another measure that we can also associate, not just the linking, but is there another measure we can say, hey, we're a little light on the road projects discussion or initiatives or the pipeline of road projects this year, but we really see that parks are dominating a lot of our discussion and we're all passionate about that. So, that's really good. You know, it's how do we look at that high level of very important projects and then see how we're balancing or focusing the energies in those areas? So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati.
So, I think that the strategic plan provides a really good framework for discussion and for moving projects forward. I would like to see sustainability and equity more enhanced, more brought out in the plan, both in the language under each specific, under each specific element of the strategic plan. And also, I think that it would be worth discussing raising equity to the level of an element of the plan. equity to the level of, of an element of the plan. We don't have to do that today, or now, but I think that that would be, that Morrisville is, provides equal opportunities, Morrisville provides, um, affordable housing, Morrisville provides opportunities for entrepreneurship. I just think that, um, I think it would be good to, to put all that kind of stuff somewhere in, in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender?
I just wanted to echo what the mayor was saying with regards to the Morrisville Pro, um, site. Uh, I, I really like the, the framework and the way it looks. I, um, I would just like to see it updated, as, as the mayor was saying, when I go, when I go to it and look at, um, you know, the transportation initiative, I, unless I'm just not looking at it right, I don't see anything about Morrisville Carpenter, I don't see anything about the Smart Shuttle. Um, I would just like to see this updated directly to the projects that we are working on. Um, I had another comment as well. You know, I, I like the fact that in, um, our, our town council meetings, for each agenda item, the strategic plan sheet is provided with items checked off. Um, I just wonder if there's a way of bringing it more to the forefront of, um, when we're talking about a topic, to relate it back to this, uh, plan, um, in a more, uh, direct way, where we bring it out in our discussions. To me, it seems like it gets lost, even though it's in our agenda packet, um, it gets lost in our discussion.
So a couple of ideas, it looks like, have been added in, excuse me, in the chat log, I believe, uh, Councilmember Rabadi had stated hers in her comment. It's a good framework, doesn't seem like sustainability and environment has been at the forefront up until now, um, including promotion of generational wealth for equity. Um, and then presenter can relate during presentation, and I'm assuming that is the, the plan alignment with the items. Any other comments here about performance overall of our plan over the last couple of years? All right, I'm gonna move on, if I click in the right place, to our timeline and next steps. So we shared a timeline in October with you all of kind of how we thought this might transition over the next, uh, six or eight months, and that has been modified to show where there have been a couple of delays. Um, recently, we completed step four, and we are currently at step five. Uh, we're roughly about one step behind where we proposed in October, um, where we kind of would like to have be, like to have been at this time. Um, however, we are taking our time. We want to be intentional with this process, and intentional with our communication and engagement, and we don't wanna short-change it, very much the same, uh, as, as we did with the first iteration. Uh, we are beginning with collecting your feedback this weekend. Our community input, uh, process will begin on Monday and go through March nineteenth. Uh, so following retreat and following that process will be one, a little bit closer to our original proposed timeline. After then, staff will need to take time to review all input and analyze, and make some, some further, more concrete recommendations to council for consideration. Those are really outlined in steps six and seven, as noted on your screen. We'll likely be scheduling a work session, as I mentioned earlier, for review and discussion with council in April, so that's around step six. To be respectful of both staff and council's involvement and commitment to the annual budget development, review, and adoption process, we did adjust step seven, um, because we are a little bit behind, and so we have expanded that to two steps now, so we've broken that out to seven and eight. Um, we don't wanna overload with work on top of the budget, we want to give that process its due diligence. Um, and then once the new revised or updated version of the plan is approved, we will then begin our work with departments to revise their individual department plans. Um, before I turn it back over to council for any questions, I would like to see if Town Manager Paige has any additional comments or, or thoughts she would like to add.
Uh, thank you, Erin, but no, I think you've done a great job.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Colley, council, I'm happy to answer any other questions you all may have at this time. All right, I am, I am not seeing any in the chat log. All right, if there are no questions, I will, uh, stop control, and I will let the next, uh, presentation commence. Thank you all for your time, I very much appreciate your input and your feedback today.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson, you did a great job. At this time, I'd like to recognize Town Manager Paige, um, to get us back on track and give us an update on schedule.
Thank you, mayor. We are really not too far off schedule, just about ten minutes, so I would propose you go ahead and take your break now for twenty minutes, uh, be back at three, what, twenty-five?
It sounds correct. So please, uh, brief twenty-minute recess, please be back at three twenty-five, and put in chat when you arrive back. Thank you all very much. It's three twenty-seven, I'm gonna bring us back into order now, I'd like to recognize Town Manager Paige for any comments before I recognize our town engineer.
No, sir, we're ready to go.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, sidewalk proj- project prioritization review. Mark Spagnoli, our town engineer, will lead and facilitate this conversation. Mr. Spagnoli?
Thank you, mayor. Good afternoon, mayor, mayor Protem, council members. Can everybody hear me okay? Very good, thank you. Uh, well, it was exciting to come after Erin, because I, uh, got to hear, uh, things in the strategic plan that were important to me, like transportation, and sidewalks, and walkable, so that should make my, my presentation go very smoothly. Uh, so we have a lot of information to go over today, and, uh, let's go ahead and get started. All right, so this is the only slide I'm gonna read off, just to make sure we're on track. Uh, our goals for the presentation today are to review the current and planned projects we have in sidewalks, uh, review our future projects, review sidewalk funding needs, uh, review updated staff prioritization based on our current criteria, and review prioritization matrix, uh, that we have and discussion about that. Now, just to do a quick, uh, background and history, this is, this, some of this is a little bit of a repeat from the November update, but just to get us back on track, uh, in 2015, the council adopted a sidewalk redevelopment policy, some funding has been allocated between 2016 and 2019. In 2018, the council adopted, established a sidewalk pedestrian enhancement capital fund. Um, we've continued discussions about sidewalks over the last few years, and in 2020, we started working on some projects that were the top-ranked, uh, from the previous ranking, and we've updated the council at the, uh, last, uh, last November at a workshop. So here's the overall list of the, uh, sidewalk gap projects that exist today, there's thirty-four segments, uh, within the town that have been identified as missing sidewalk gaps, and we're gonna go over these in, in detail, not, not already too much, I'm just gonna do a quick overview here before we get into further detail. Uh, the orange, the ones colored in orange are under development right now by the town. Uh, the ones colored in yellow are future DOT projects. The ones in green are upcoming town or NC, the ones in pink are future DOT projects more than five years. The ones in blue are future planned development projects, where a private development will be coming in, and we'll be asking them to build those sidewalks. The ones in white are, are, uh, unplanned, they're future projects, but they haven't been picked up by anybody at this time, and funding hasn't been allocated. And the ones in gray are under construction by either DOT or, or a private developer at this time. These, these have been updated with the latest cost figures that we have, um, you know, they were originally priced out back in 2015, 2016. We've updated that to 2020 costs, 2021 costs, and we're gonna get into more detail as we move through the presentation. So let's talk about our current active projects. We have seven projects, um, one of them, or two of them are, are DOT-funded, Airport Boulevard and Morrisville Carpenter Road, it's a, it's a partnership that we have with them on those projects. Uh, Airport Boulevard, just to go over the details of each one, our consultant is working on final design, and we are working on construction easements at this time, and construction is anticipated to happen later this calendar year, based on, uh, DOT's funding. Paramount Parkway from Perimeter Park Drive to thirty-nine-hundred Perimeter, Paramount Parkway, uh, the plans have been completed, and they're in permit review now, so we expect to go into construction in springtime now. NC fifty-four Segment C from Wilson Place to, uh, Westerly to Linda Drive, the design work is complete on that one as well. Uh, we're working on, uh, town and DOT permit approvals, we're working on sidewalk easements, 'cause we do need some, uh, easements, uh, to construct the sidewalk, and we expect the construction to start sometime in the summer. Morrisville Carpenter Road, that's part of our bigger project, those sidewalk segments will be completed over the next eighteen months in various, uh, sections, so that one's already on its way. North Coast Cary Parkway from Rainbow Drive to Prestonwood Country Club Tennis Courts, that design work is also complete, we're reviewing those plans now for permit, and we expect that to go into construction in spring as well. Cooley Parkway from Slater Road, Eastery to Factory Shops Road, the design is almost complete, we're working on construction easements for that one, and we expect construction sometime in the late spring of this year. And lastly, the NC fifty-four Segment F, that one's from Airport Boulevard, northerly to Perimeter Park Drive, the design work is in, is in process, and we expect that one to start, uh, construction in the summertime. This is pretty much the description of what I just went through. So let's talk about also our Betterment and upcoming projects. These projects, uh, we have, the ones in yellow are future NC DOT projects, and these are projects that are driven by NC DOT, and we're making a contribution for the sidewalk installation. The ones in green are, are projects where you have an eighty-twenty match, uh, these are the, uh, the five church street segments. This, this will occur very similar to how we're taking care of Morrisville Carpenter, the town will take the lead on the design and managing the entire project, and it'll be a reimbursement-type project with DOT. And the one in gray is currently in the construction, that's the Louis Street Stevens Drive segment that's, uh, under construction now. And this actually totals, um, almost a million dollars in, in funding needs. So now let's talk about the, uh, the remaining projects. These, these projects, uh, no funding has been identified by DOT or, or the town at this time. Uh, we've got, we've got ten of these projects, some are on DOT roads, and some are on town roads. Uh, these, these ten locations, as I said, uh, have not been funded or identified by, uh, DOT or private development, so they're kind of the, the missing links that, uh, that need to be worked on. And this ranking order shown here was based on the 2015 criteria, and we're gonna get into that in a little more detail. So just to give everybody a, a detailed, uh, mapping of each one, so we can get familiar with these ten projects, uh, as you can see, eighteen, number eighteen is NC fifty-four D, uh, that's, that's not too far from Town Hall Drive. And actually, my, my recommendation, just from off the bat, would be to try to work more closely with DOT on this one, because it's got a, a bridge crossing over Crabtree Creek, and that's an expansion, expensive bridge expansion, that would be hard for some that the town could undertake at this time. Um, you have two international drive segments, both are commercial industrial areas, as you know. You've got NC fifty-four E, that's an NC, uh, DOT road, and you also have a sidewalk that would take you from Morrisville Parkway into Morrisville Community Park, which would be a nice amenity, to give pedestrians easier access to the park. You have two other project locations here, Soul Grove Church Road, that's a commercial area as well, and NC fifty-four A, uh, this, this segment is just south of Airport Boulevard, and then it's a DOT road. And lastly, we grouped all the Louis Stevens Drive projects together, uh, this is a high, highly residential area, will have new access to the, to the upcoming senior center opening, um, at the corner of Davis and, and McCrimmon, so that brings some proximity to some, some areas, and it'll also be able to connect to the section of Louis Stevens that's under construction now by DOT to the north. So overall, and this is a sort of refresher from November, we still have the same budget needs, uh, to get all these projects going, you have the active project budget needs of almost four hundred thousand, your Betterment and upcoming project costs almost a million. The ten projects, uh, that are, have, have not been allocated is just over two million dollars, and with a contingency amount, you're almost at four million dollars in, in sidewalk project needs. Now, based on your input in November, we did take a relook at the, the last projects that, uh, that hadn't been allocated, or haven't started any type of, of design or anything, and we determined, based on current conditions, that there is a reshuffling of the ranking. Uh, we, we used the existing criteria, and we, we went ahead and, and staff took a second look at these and, and, and determined that, based on current conditions, you have new developments that have popped up since 2015, you have additional construction activities, um, some other sidewalks that have been built, and also things like the senior center that, that weren't there before, that you can take into consideration. With that, you do have some reshuffling and reranking of the, of those, those projects. Uh, one of them stayed the same, that was, um, NC fifty-four D, that was still, was highly ranked, uh, but you do see some reshuffling of, like, Louis Stevens Drive, those, those used to be pretty much at the bottom of the list, and International Drive, those have shifted downward, uh, to the bottom of the list. So, uh, it is interesting to see, when you, when you look at new conditions and how, how conditions change, uh, that there is an opportunity for, for that, as well as, I think on our next, we wanna start talking about the, the current adopted criteria with you all, and take feedback on, on possibilities for modifying that, if, if need be. Uh, the criteria, uh, that was adopted basically hovers around these five categories, and then I'll, I'll take you in a little further, uh, afterwards. So you have, you know, pedestrians and area density, constructivit- constructibility, connectivity, safety, and citizen support. And with each, with each one of these, these areas, uh, in the criteria, there is a, a formula that was used, and, and it was developed based on input from other, uh, criterias in the area. We, we took, um, examples from the city of Raleigh and some other municipalities, and there's a, um, there is a point system, and it's, it's based on, uh, like, for example, proximity to an activity center, so how close you are to, like, say, the senior center, you get a certain amount of points for that, if you're within a quarter-mile distance, a half-mile distance, et cetera. And those are the type of, uh, uh, objective scoring that was built into the, the criteria. And these are the various categories, and you can see here the maximum amount of points that could be allocated in each category. So I, I think there might be some, oh, sorry, did I go too fast?
Yes.
I apologize. Some, I was, somebody, I didn't, I didn't see the chat, so let's go back, uh...
Well, I was trying to notify the mayor and others, um, I...
Hi, Cardi.
You went through the slides so fast that I couldn't even write down the questions that I had on the slide before you moved to the, the next slide, so...
Oh, my, I'm sorry.
I am...
What would you like, what would you like me to go back to?
Well, that's what I'm trying to sort out, um...
So as you look at that, Councilmember Fender, the first. I'm sorry, I was going to explain, the first few slides were to lead up to that reranking so that you could see what had changed as staff had reevaluated at your request where those sidewalk rankings were. So those first slides you had seen before up to the point that the reranking slide occurred. So Mark, if you want to go back to the reranking slide and then Councilmember Fender and others, if you have questions that lead up to that, we're happy to go back to other slides as well.
Sorry about that, I didn't have the chat open, I apologize for that, I was trying to stay focused on the presentation. This is the reranking slide.
Where would you like to start, Councilmember Fender?
Well, if I can speak without being interrupted this time, it would be nice to go back to Slide 8. I had a question about which one you talked about would be good for working with the DOT that had a bridge. Was that 18?
Yes, number, it's 18. That bridge is crossing over Crabtree Creek, so it would require a bridge expansion in order to accommodate the sidewalk.
All right. I don't have any other questions because at that point I got lost and wasn't able to keep up with where you were. So that's all I have. I'm not going to have any good input to this conversation because I missed the majority of it with the slides going back too fast. And Brandon, regardless of what the intent was, if it still isn't working, then it doesn't matter. So I don't have anything else. I apologize, but I am just extremely frustrated right now.
Mayor Colley.
Yeah, so totally understandable and why don't we just, let's all just have a quick reset. Let's go back to that slide, which is 18, Slide 8. And to clarify, that's the bridge that now goes, that our Crabtree-Hatcher Creek Greenway goes underneath for a little bit of location there. So I've driven over it a lot, I'm sure we all have, and it's too thin to have a sidewalk. So DOT would have to really help us out because bridge expansion is very expensive. So Mr. Spagnoli, if you can, from that slide, just go slowly, keep the chat open. And we can go to Slide number nine. And I think the main thing there was these are mostly commercial area and just reset.
Yeah.
We're just going to go five minutes over and that's not a problem, it's about the discussion and make sure that we're all engaged. So if you can start again at Slide 9, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, no issue. And my apologies, I mean, feel free to say something verbally, I was reading my notes and I didn't have the chat open, but I apologize for that. We'll, I'm happy to reset and we'll make it happen, so. So Slide 9 is, this is just bringing in a map view of two of the other projects. Soul Grove Church Road, this is a, this is a commercial area. And NC54A is another DOT road and this is just south of Airport Boulevard.
Councilmember Robati?
Councilmember Robati, have questions?
Yeah, the one on Travel Hill Road, does that, does that, why is that such a little piece? Does that, is that bordered on both sides by other sidewalks?
It ties into another sidewalk segment, yes.
On both sides?
This is on the east side, I can verify.
No, I mean, the beginning and the end of this, of this.
Oh, yes.
Would both tie into other sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, so it's like a little unfinished piece, thank you.
Yes. And then if we move on to Slide 10, this is the Lewis Stevens Drive segments that are missing. This basically picks up where there's missing segments from McCrimmon, north to Gray Marble, these three segments. And it would tie into the section of sidewalk work that the DOT is working on now, north of Gray Marble. Now, this is, like I mentioned earlier, this is a highly residential area and it would help tie into the new senior center at the corner of Davis and McCrimmon. Councilmember Garamella?
Sorry.
Yes. Mark, when this was brought to us last time, I'd asked one question. There is an orphan piece of sidewalk, the new apartments that is on the intersection of Church Street and MacCrimmon and connecting to Church Street. We own certain property there, right? The, you know, Carrington property. So we need to ensure like that is done, even though if it's on our dime, because it's our property there. Because in your calculation, you're looking at more area, but also I would put a criteria where it connects to where we have amenities, the same way you're talking about seniors and Alex Senior Center, right? We have the Church Street Park and that particular piece, it's less than 50 yards and people walk on the streets, which is not safe.
Understood, yes.
Yeah, so that I would, you know, because there are so many events that keep happening there and I would highly encourage, you know, we finish that and bump it up to the top of the criteria section.
Okay, I've made a note of it. I think there were a number of chats, Councilmember Robati and I think the mayor?
Councilmember Robati, please, I was done with my comment.
Oh, okay, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to know if we're adding that new, the new temple over on, the new synagogue, I'm sorry. I want to make sure that we're mindful of the fact that for certain high holy days, people are going to be walking to that synagogue. So we're going to want to make sure that we have, that we're fully sidewalked from all the nearby neighborhoods to that synagogue. Because people are going to walk, so we might as well give them a sidewalk if there's not already one there.
Are you referring to the one on Morrisville Carpenter that's next to Thornberry that's coming in soon?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, yes. Well, certainly Morrisville Carpenter will, once we're completed with the project. But I think overall from the community through to there is a good point. Okay. Did I miss any other questions? No, I think we can move on. So on Slide 11, just to overview again of the budget needs. Again, the active project funding needs are almost 400,000. The betterment upcoming project costs almost a million dollars. The future projects, the 10 projects that we just mapped out is a little over 2 million and with a contingency, you're almost at $4 million in sidewalk funding requests. So this slide is the rerank slide and I'm just going to make sure I go over it in enough detail so everybody understands. The, this was the stab that the staff took at reranking the projects based on the existing criteria and based on current conditions. So over the years, things have changed, there's been more development, some sidewalks have been put in. There's some new activity centers, some new developments have been built. So with all that, we went through a reranking process based on the criteria that exists today. And after doing that, there was a reshuffling of the projects. Number one stayed the same, but there was some reshuffling. The Lewis Stevens Drive projects were pretty much at the bottom of the list, those somewhat moved into the middle of the list. And then International Drive moved further down the list. So that was an effort that we undertook based on input we got from the council in November. And this was the reranking that came out of it, so we wanted to share that with you all. That doesn't mean there isn't still opportunity to review the way the ranking works and see if there's opportunities to change it, but this is what we did based on the existing criteria. So the adopted criteria that we have today, it highlights the five areas. And getting deeper into that, the criteria has a point system that allocates points for each area. So as a good example, if there's evidence of a warrant path where people are already walking, we realize that that deserves some points, that means people are already walking there and we need to build a sidewalk there, like that could get up a maximum of 15 points. If there is a regional connection to another sidewalk network, direct connection, you get more points for that. Depending on the street classification, if it's a major arterial or just a local road, there's differences in points for that. And it's pretty well detailed. As I mentioned earlier, this criteria was developed in conjunction with other municipalities. We took samples of their sidewalk criteria and we kind of combined it all to make a criteria for Morrisville. So that's how this came about back in 2015 and Ben Howes on the call, he might be able to give more information if need be. So to garner some input, we were thinking that we could talk about the criteria further. If anything has changed that resulted in criteria needing to be added, removed or updated from the current criteria list. You know, what has changed that would cause you to reset any of the scoring matrix points? Or what other questions or concerns about the current evaluation criteria and scoring matrix you may have? So I see Councilmember Fender.
Yes, thank you, Mark. I just had a question with the new ranking, well, with the projects on the new ranking list compared to these ones that are on Slide 6 for betterment upcoming projects. I had a question with three, well, it's a two-part question. One is with Church Street, why is that project an NC DOT project? And then the second question is, what is the timing of these projects on Slide 12 compared to the timing of these projects on Slide 6? Because it's showing you Church Street is being fiscal year '22, '23.
Yeah, so I can certainly answer those questions. So Church Street is a DOT road and we are actually going to manage that project kind of like we're doing Morrisville Carpenter. So the town's going to manage the design and the construction of the project. And it's going to be a reimbursement type project from DOT, an 80/20 reimbursement, just like we're doing Morrisville Carpenter pretty much. So it is a DOT project and that's why they're participating, we're going to manage that one. And that one's expected, right now it's in the current fiscal year '22, '23 in DOT's funding schedule. So that's why we're handling that one that way. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, sort of, but then I'm curious about the projects on Slide 12.
Yes, I'll answer that for you. So Slide 12.
Well, I've got another one, I mean, I am curious about the timing on these and NC54, the state road as well, so what's the difference?
Well, the difference in this case is that DOT has allocated funding for Church Street, but these other projects on Page 12, there hasn't been any funding allocated from the Department of Transportation. So in this case, on Page 12, on Slide 12, none of these, none of these projects are calendared yet because they don't have any funding allocated to them, not from us, not from DOT, not from anybody. So what we're looking for from Page 12 is to get input from the council in terms of ranking, in terms, to see if the town's going to move forward with them or not. I mean, theoretically, we could, we could keep advocating and working with the DOT and eventually they may put some funding into the state road projects over the long, long term. But right now, they're not on the short term or on the long term on DOT's books. And that's why we're talking about those on Slide 12.
Okay, so in theory, these projects could be later than the fiscal year '22, '23.
Yeah, in theory, yes. In theory, it would, it would pretty much be up to the council and allocating funding for these and maybe over a long term, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mayor?
Yep, thank you both. If you could go to the one where you're asking the questions of the criteria, sidewalk criteria discussion. So from my opinion, the matrix is good, it's solid, it has good criteria. I see that as something that we can use to inform our decisions, but not to conclude our decisions. Because to that end, it seems like there's a couple of these road segments that they score well on paper, but they don't like pass the smell test. Like where are people going to and from, how much will they be used? For example, the fact that the Morrisville Community Park segment doesn't rank high, that's a red flag to me. That's one that really rises up a lot. Also, the Carrington property that Councilmember Garamella mentioned. So what I would think might be useful for us is to be given more information and expand that chart to include whether or not it's an NC DOT road, whether it's a town road. Because eventually NC DOT might pay for some of them, although unlikely given current budget stuff. And then to send that back to us, like we've done in other examples, where we go ahead and score them each individually as council members and then we can aggregate and revisit what everything looks like. I think that would be a really good way to identify where our interest is. I am interested in the ones up by Gray Marble and behind Breckenridge, for example, because they're very residential. I think that they'll be used a lot and our residents will be very interested in them. Anything near Church Street, for example. Further north on Church Street, there's a segment between Kits Creek Road and I think Mason Farm that I think would be important to finish that one as well. So that would be my hope and I'd love to hear other councils' thoughts about using this as a data point rather than a foregone conclusion that these are the ones we want to do in this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Mark. And these slides are really full of a lot of really good information, so I appreciate that. I think that, just to be really clear, Slide 11 and Slide 12 are probably the key to this whole presentation, for me anyhow. Slide 11, and if we, make sure we're all together on this, the top two lines you have there about the actively funded projects and the betterment projects, those are all moving forward between FY '21 and '24. We are moving forward with all those projects. And so now, so now we're looking at the future projects, which are over $2 million and which are on Slide 12. So.
Correct.
I think what I would like to know, and I think I just heard TJ say this too, I'd like to know if there are opportunities for some kind of funding for any of these projects. And the criteria is excellent that we have set up, that you have set up. And the way that we rank them then, I think is a great place for us to be looking. But if there are funding opportunities that might shuffle this order, that would be really helpful. And I know you can't answer that today, but as we're moving forward, there may be opportunities for, I don't know what, NC DOT, grants, whatever. There's always LAP funding and bike ped funding from LAP. So I would, I would say we need to kind of keep that in mind and that might reshuffle some of this based on windows of opportunity. So I think that's all I want to say. I guess the only other thing, and I think I'm right about this, but I'll ask. I guess the only other thing, and I think I'm right about this, but I'll ask it out loud and make sure I'm correct. The NC 54 projects that you have listed on Page 12, the 54 D, A, and E, those are not projects that are going to be close to being funded by NC DOT anytime soon. And by that, I mean, we already know the northern part of 54 is slated to be widened, there's funding available for that. This is that middle section of 54 that has no money attached to it anytime soon.
Yeah, that's true.
I want to make sure that, okay, that's fine. Because I would hate to, I'd hate to throw money at something knowing that, you know, shortly it potentially could be torn up because of a road widening project. So I think that's something else to kind of keep in mind as we go through. And those are all my comments right now. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Squaggin Johnson?
Thank you, Mark. This is one of our favorite topics as a council, I think, because sidewalks are part of our entire framework for connecting our town. With that said, this is an incredibly important slide that you're showing right now with the future proposed projects. When we first started this, I looked at this as an opportunity to identify orphan sidewalks. And what I meant by that is identifying properties like the Carrington property where they already have some development on the land, but yet the sidewalks, when they were developed, were never built. And so the sidewalks would not be built if the town didn't step in and help support building the sidewalks. We had a project several years ago where we knew these existing properties would never build sidewalks. They were single-family homes, they weren't part of an HOA, they were just, you know, needing sidewalk to be built. So with that said, with this chart that you're showing, it'd be interesting, I don't know, because you've shared a lot of different things. So for me, I would like to know if something is eligible for LAP funding versus there's no criteria at all anywhere, it's only a town-funded project eligibility. That will help us understand, if we don't build it, no one will. LAP funding are typically associated with our state-funded roads. And time to time, if we have shovel-ready projects or design work already done, when funds become available, we could score very high because we would have something ready in order to take an opportunity for quick funding opportunities. We've been able to do that, I think, a couple times. But thinking about these future projects being LAP-eligible and then prioritizing them by getting them design-ready might also help reduce the cost to the town for some of these listed projects. So that's just my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, actually, Ben Howell just reminded me that the sidewalk segment that Councilmember Garamella brought up on Church Street there, that's going to be included as part of the Church Street work that we do, upcoming project that's already, you know, be in play in fiscal year 22. So that's going to be taken care of.
That's really great news. Thank you.
Let's see, Councilmember Rowell?
Yeah, I think this, most of my comments and questions have already been addressed, but I think that I would like us to continue to explore, as Mayor Protam Johnson said, other funding sources, you know, thinking out of the box with, you know, grants, LAP funding. I like Mayor Colley's point about, to the extent we can reevaluate sidewalks, you know, like, you know, the one on Kit Creek Road or near Breckenridge, where we can address gaps closer to residential. But I would prefer going with what we already have rather than reinventing the wheel every time. You know, we've put a lot of time into this prioritization process. So I think, you know, I just wanted to say that we just have to, as we get ready for budget season, look at where we can get other funding sources to invest, similar to what we're doing with road maintenance. And then moving forward, given post, during the pandemic, declining DOT revenues, we're seeing a lot of road projects getting delayed, but I'm just concerned about the kinds of resources coming in for these sidewalk projects. So I think we're going to have to be on the lookout and just making sure we're proactive on that.
Mark, I think Councilmember Robati is next.
Yes.
So I was wondering if there was any possibility of, like, for example, Louis Stevens Drive A, B, and C are pretty well spread out over the list at numbers two, five, and eight. But it seems to me that there would be some economy of scale there in that we could pay one design fee to have the three, those three segments designed at once as one project rather than going back three times as we're ready to make each project shovel-ready. And really, the same applies to NC 54 A, E, and D. When we get ready, I think that when we get ready to get design work on the first segment, we should have all three segments designed, even if we don't build them at that time. And also, I think that, I understand that a lot of work went into the process here, but I still think that the projects that are most likely to immediately benefit the largest number of citizens, like the Morrisville Community Park sidewalk and the Louis Stevens Drive sidewalks, I think that those projects should be higher in the priority list. I mean, I see the priority list and if we have to follow it, then we do, but I think that those projects should be given, should be bumped up the list. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, so I had a couple of follow-up questions. I agree with what's been said about looking for LAP funding or other grant funding for these. I'm also wondering that, you know, I know when we see this $2 million or $4 million total, that that is a bit daunting, but I'm wondering, or I would be in favor of looking at just knocking off some of these smaller ones as we're able, like, Councilmember Robati was just referring to the Morrisville Community Park sidewalk and these, you know, that's $114,000. Or this Louis Stevens Drive A is $60,000. That next one is $67,000. I'm just wondering if we couldn't knock out some of these ones, you know, a little bit at a time? And then I had a follow-up question too with what you were saying. Ben reminding you of the Church Street, upcoming Church Street project, can you remind me what that is?
Yeah, that's actually, I could probably point right to the location on the map. Let me turn back to that page.
Is that a sidewalk project or a road project?
It's a road and sidewalk project. The total project cost is $2 million and our portion is $400,000. Let me see, I think it's on Slide six.
Oh, oh. So you're saying that Carrington portion would be addressed with that DOT project?
Yes, that's correct. The one in, the one.
Okay. I kind of got the impression that some of the other town councilmembers, like Councilmember Garamella.
The one in shown here in green.
Yeah, but I kind of got the impression when they refer to that area that we may want that sidewalk there sooner than later, because it's just a short piece.
Yeah, if I could, for a second, Ben, if you're on the call, if you could help us, I think the question being posed is this short segment on Church Street between where the new set of apartment homes town opened there going up towards Church Street Park, which would essentially be the Carrington property. Are you referring to an active project there that's going to improve that?
Yes, so the green project that Mark has highlighted on the screen is a project that was funded through the NC DOT State Transportation Improvement Program. And it is actually in the DOT documents as limits from Morrisville Carpenter Road up to the Durham County line. And the goal of that project and the reason it is $2 million is that it is, it would fill in all of the sidewalk gaps on Church Street, on the entirety of Church Street between Morrisville Carpenter Road and the Durham County line. So both that Carrington property gap and then the gap that the mayor, I believe, mentioned a little bit further up Church Street, both are included in that project, but that's also why it's a multi-year project is because it is a large project. To Councilmember Fender's point, you know, the town certainly could move ahead and construct a sidewalk along Carrington property, but we would not get the DOT, we would not be reimbursed from DOT for that if we did it before we got the DOT local agreement in place and went through the process that DOT has laid out for that project.
Right. Okay.
I would be interested in pursuing that, that possibility of just looking at the town going ahead and constructing the sidewalk in that small segment. I don't know what the other councilmembers think about that, but I think it would be a good idea to look at that possibility. That's all I have.
Thank you. Looks like the mayor's next.
Yeah, I would echo the comments by Councilmember Fender that I'd be interested if our staff could look into accelerating the process with DOT to get an assessment of when we might be able to do at least those two segments, which seem like they're of a high need. I know that Paramount and McCrimmon, we went ahead and stepped up and did the new temporary traffic light, knowing that that was to the benefit of the town, even though we're not getting reimbursed. If we could find some way to help NC DOT, help us either by accelerating the process or we do it and they reimburse us, I'd be very interested in knowing if that was a possibility. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protam Johnson?
Thank you, Mark. So this project we're talking about is slated to start in FY '22. Do you have a, do we have a date yet for exactly when in FY '22? I mean, that's right around the corner anyhow. I'm not opposed to trying to, you know, get this section installed sooner than later, but isn't the project going to start pretty quickly anyhow? Or do you have any info on that?
I'll have Ben help me, but we would still have to start the design at that time, so there would still be that time that it would take to get the design completed and then, you know, permitted and get ready for construction. So that could still be some time. And Ben, is there a specific date in '22, '23 that the DOT has established for this project yet?
No, there's not. It's, right now, we are waiting to get the final local agreement from NC DOT and we would need to execute that. And then that would allow us to begin our design work on it and then move forward through, ultimately, you know, if we have to acquire any easements or anything, and then construction. One other note I just wanted to give on that Carrington piece, and this goes for any sidewalks that are on DOT roads, it's, they can sometimes look to put, it can look like they can be put in easier than they actually can be. Because NC DOT has very specific requirements when it comes to sidewalks on roads, especially roads that do not have curb and gutter. And I believe in that stretch of Church Street, we do not have curb and gutter. So there are requirements for where you can put it if you don't add in curb and gutter. So while that segment does look very small and easy to put in, because of DOT standards, it's not always something that can be done very quickly or even that cheaply if we have to put in curb and gutter there, which is why we had moved forward when, several years ago, we were able to put in requests to DOT for step funding, we added the entire Church Street corridor for sidewalks into the step funding because we thought it would be better to try and do one, get that entire corridor full of sidewalks rather than do piecemeal projects.
Yep. And just, and I hear what you're saying, Ben, that makes a whole lot of sense. Thank you for sharing that. But when the project does get designed and then we start moving into construction, how much of an input will we have on where and when, or not when, but where you start? And of course, once you prioritize where you start, that means others, their sidewalk gets delayed. But is there, are we going to have opportunity to weigh in on that?
Yes, I certainly think we would. And Mark may have thoughts on that too, but generally, since we would be running, managing the project, we could require in our bid documents or require our contractor, once we select them, to start in a certain area and work on a specific segment at first. With this Church Street project, there will be, there's a lot of segmentation of sidewalks that we, so it's going to be a lot of jumping around anyways.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly put that in the criteria during construction to start in one specific area and move from there in phases. So yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you all very much. Helpful.
I think Councilmember Garamella has, yes?
Yeah, I think going back to Benjamin, you just said, right, the Carrington property, you're saying it's not an easy proposal, then, but it is also the most critical piece for connecting Church Street. How do we go about that then?
And that's where, you know, I mean, I would say hopefully we could start, you know, we'd be able to start work on this NC DOT project and try and prioritize that segment. But if it is, you know, if council does determine it to be a higher priority, then the best way to move that forward, you know, I guess as quickly as possible, would probably be to separate it into its own project. Mark, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, yeah, we would try to work with DOT. If we stay on the DOT's list and do it through them, we would work with them to move it on as quickly as possible. You know, if we do it ourselves and we, you know, do it with our own funding, then, you know, we'll just, we'll make it work. I mean, we can do the engineering and make it happen. You know, I just, it seems from a technical perspective to, it would be easier to put it together in this larger project where we're working on a lot of at the same time. But we can do it either way.
What's the timeline, right? That's the key, right?
So Councilmember Garamella? I think what we would ask is let us talk to DOT and verify what our timing looks like on getting the local agreement done and what the timeframe moving forward from that would be. We could compare that to if we were to try to do this project ourselves, come back to you with those two sort of options, recognizing that the do-it-yourself option is likely to have some potentially significant more expense associated with it because of us taking on the curb and gutter that would normally be a part of the DOT project. But we can certainly evaluate that and come back to you with some more information.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor?
If I could add a possible wrinkle on those two options, we own the Carrington property. If we could, in a meaningful and safe way, essentially just put in a little grit trail of some way to connect the two existing sidewalk segments, just to keep people off the road for safety in the meantime, I think that that would be a possible solution. We're doing grit trails in Morrisville Community Park, Phase Three. We're doing grit trails in Morrisville Community Park Phase Three. We just want to get people off the road so they can travel safely right now. And they might not know that that property is town property and they're welcome to walk on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I think we got to the last slide. Let me go back to where we were. So, yeah, I think we made it to the last slide. I've taken copious notes of what we talked about today. I certainly we certainly appreciate the input and we want to move these forward. I don't know if you want to have any further discussion about funding possibilities at this point, funding options besides what we've talked about or anything you want to talk about, but that wraps up my portion of the presentation.
So Mayor Protem Johnson, and then I have a question, but Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'm sorry, I one more thought, too, when we're talking about funding, this is a good opportunity for bond funding, too. When we do a if we're if we're going to do a transportation bond question to make sure it includes the ability to fund sidewalk projects. So of course, I would much rather we also look at LAP and other opportunities first, but bond is an option, too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and that's, I think, part of why we wanted to get this information to you today in advance of Jeannie's conversation with you tomorrow, so that you, you know, are reminded of where we are in terms of sort of this this $4 million estimate of your total needs, understanding that we certainly will continue to look for funding opportunities from LAP and and other sources to do that as well. So I did want to circle back. One of the things that we heard was a suggestion to send this out to council for a ranking of the segments. And so, Mark, if you could go back up one slide.
Yep.
Where the the criteria is shown. So what I would remind you is that this was you you as a council or the council at the time adopted this as your criteria related to a sidewalk prioritization policy. So this is an objective way of using this criteria to then evaluate different segments. What I've heard you saying, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you think there are certain aspects of some of these segments that should merit more consideration. So I think there are two different options to to talk about here. One is for you to evaluate this criteria, which you helped to develop, and to suggest that some of these categories deserve more or less in the terms of the points assigned. And that would help then continue to objectively evaluate all of these different remaining segments that we have, that essentially the 10 now that are left to be taken care of by the town or in conjunction with DOT. So that would be one option for you is to receive the criteria and to see if there's any suggestions for adjusting the criteria to address the concerns you've mentioned with some of these segments. The other option is if you are just going to rank the projects, then we're getting away from the objective approach that was adopted in your policy and instead just ranking based more on where they are and what they are. Staff's recommendation is that you would consider the existing criteria, and if you see things there that you feel merit more consideration, then we can certainly make those adjustments and staff can revisit and re-rank these because staff is using objective criteria. These rankings were done by several staff members all together to make sure that we use the criteria you established.
Mayor?
I would defer to the town manager's comment before mine, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to add on because I was here with Ben when Ben originally developed this policy. And just a reminder that the exact reason council wanted a objective policy was to avoid being lobbied about, I'll call them, pet projects or specific projects by neighborhoods that then each of you might have your own priorities versus some objective way to develop them to evaluate them.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I understand all the logic towards tying ourselves to the data. I see this as an opportunity to be informed by the data and the criteria. I don't want to have to look at the criteria and find a way to make the Morrisville Community Park sidewalk segment rise up. I'd rather use this to inform. It brought us to a top 10. If you can give us the details of the criteria that went into these new scores, that can help us inform as we go ahead and rank them according to the smell test and what actually kind of makes sense because these are all important criteria. And yes, we did give input and we did develop it, but I feel that when push comes to shove, it's up to the council to decide which of these makes the most sense for the town at the time and not tie ourselves necessarily to adopted criteria. So those are my thoughts on that, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the comments. Thank you.
And and if I could just speak before Mayor Protem Johnson, I think I'll sort of speak on behalf of staff. I think I've gleaned enough of what you've said, that we've got some good policy recommendations that we could bring back to you that that are based in substance into some of the the priorities that you've you've mentioned, including those that you just spoke about, Mayor. That's my opinion.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
So, yeah, I'm going to it seems like the and if I'm wrong, TJ, you know, tell me, but it seems like the hangup here is that Morrisville Community Park is kind of in the middle of the pack here, in the middle of the list. It's the Morrisville Community Park project that seems to be a the issue or the hangup. And and so what I'm going to say to that is I walk that all the time. You all know I live right close to there off Morrisville Parkway, and I walk into that park almost on a daily basis, especially in the last year in the pandemic, the only place I can go. So the the difference here, though, is that the entrance to the Morrisville Community Park is not a road. It's not a major road. It's an entrance to a park. So when I look at this list, Lewis Stevens should rise up ahead of the Morrisville Community Park project because Lewis Stevens is a major road with cars driving all the time and and they're they're the safety aspect alone cries out for Lewis Stevens to rise up to the top versus the Morrisville Community Park entrance. Not that I I the Morrisville Community Park can use a walkway, that 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 is or a sidewalk, that is for sure. But I I think the the criteria actually did rank these appropriately. They it they did come out because the others should rise a little bit higher above a private entrance to a park or a driveway. It's really it's not a private entrance, but a driveway into a park. So that's that's and and I agree with the idea of we really should be looking at criteria and we really should be coming up with an objective list. And and I'm comfortable with that. If we want to go and look through the criteria and and talk about, you know, changing points or something, that's fine, but I don't know. I think this this list probably came out appropriately.
Yeah, and this may be an opportunity to add some criteria to it that maybe wasn't thought of in 2015. So we're certainly and that's why these questions were asked, to see if that that needed to be changed. I see Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, I think this is good because I remember, you know, putting this and we had to checkmark and then Benjamin came back with a grab. The only thing when my first thought when I'm looking at many of these projects, I'm looking more of the commercial projects, which are, you know, coming up the list, right? When I'm saying commercial properties like, you know, 54 or can you go back to that list? So it's so trying to define because I'm why like, yeah, like, you know, Scheller Grove to Slater, you know, or Airport, and then also the 54, you know, that is fine. And many of them, like, you know, this extra attic storage. So what was the criteria to pull these up the list that if you go back to the criteria list, right, why are they coming up compared to, you know, more of the dense residential is my just thought process? And the one point that I see here I got to is connectivity to activity zoning district, right, 15 points. Can you explain more to me about that? You know, what is the criteria for that, having that? Is it like shopping complex or something like that? You know, I'm just trying to understand.
Ben, do you want to talk about that? I'll turn to the information, I don't know if you have it in your mind.
Yeah, I can address that one a little bit. So that particular criteria was actually looking specifically at our at our zoning, it was based on our zoning districts, and it was specifically looking at our Activity Center zoning districts. So we have a community activity zoning district, neighborhood activity zoning district, business activity zoning district. And so as far as like where those zoning districts are, you are correct, they're generally around our shopping centers. So Grace Park, Bethany Village are, I believe, Neighborhood Activities Center zoning districts. Grace Park, I mean, Parkwest Village is a Regional Activities Center zoning district. I'm not completely sure about McCrimmon Corners. I believe that is an Activity Center zoning district. But again, when we when the initial scoring back in 2015 of those Lewis Stevens Drive or Lewis Stevens Road sidewalk segments were done, there was not there was there was not much of a there was not a direct connection to that Activity Center zoning district. The other thing that, again, in 2015, that that wasn't taken into account on those was the senior center was not there, and I believe Northwest Park may not have been quite constructed yet or may not have been started yet. I can't remember the timing on Northwest Park, but that's why those did get more points when they were re-scored because they do now have those facilities that they can provide better connections to.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I get it. So the only reason I'm asking Benjamin is like when I look, I see a lot of the other areas showing up, which are non-residential and more commercial activities. I was just trying to see, is there any point system that it is gaining and the heavy, you know, footprint, like for the residential area is getting shortchanged? So that that was the criteria that I was trying to look at.
And Councilmember Garamella, that may be the case. I mean, that is, I think, there is a good that is a good point to look at the criteria again, which I think a city manager, Zima and Mooney will certainly do.
Yeah.
My guess is that where where that those get more points is they're generally on roads that have higher traffic counts.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, might be you can fine tune so that the real pedestrian, you know, also like in a neighborhoods can come up the you know, come up the scoring. That's all. And I think I ask that, you know, this criteria to be re-looked, and I appreciate your few guys doing bringing it up. Thank you.
Mayor?
Actually, I'd love to give Councilmembers Scroggins, Johnson, and Fender first bite at this discussion, and then I'll go after them, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I would support the council looking at our criteria again. I think the criteria are good. It's a matter of maybe the weighting, what each, you know, category might influence the overall score. So now we're shifting towards finishing segments, connecting might rank higher than it was before. I think there I like the objective framework that we're trying to put in place. It is a little dangerous or risky if we start just saying, well, that's in the middle, but I think it should be on the top. Well, there's an underlying root cause why it's in the middle, and that's what we need to kind of think about is has our philosophy changed and also our environment changed? And should we be realigning those criteria? So those are my thoughts, and thank you.
After hearing what everyone else has said, I don't have anything new to add. Thank you. I agree with what Scroggins Johnson just said and Councilmember Garamella.
Thank you. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. The objective viewpoint, I think, is a good step, like what ranked number one, that even though it rose to the top, I think that's a nonstarter because of the width of the bridge. So that sort of gives me pause. I think it's important that we provide sidewalk connectivity to our commercial areas. A lot of people like to walk at lunch, and they are also our stakeholders, so I'm not against that. I'm just more in favor of putting the bang where the buck is, which is where our residents are looking to do more walkability all the time. So this has been a really good discussion. Mr. Spanioli, thank you so much for all your efforts. Thank you, Brandon, for helping facilitate this part of our conversation. I think it was very helpful for everybody. Now I'd like to pass it back to staff because I believe we wrapped this section.
Thank you, Mayor. And we are going to go right into Giselle's presentation on an update on the new Public Works facility.
I appreciate the opportunity today to be able to give you an update on the redevelopment of the Polyworks facilities. If possible, I would like to keep the questions until the end, and we'll go through them in the order that I see them on the chat. Okay, let me move this ahead. During today's presentation, I would like to give you an update, not only on the project, but also walk you through the background of on this project that led us to have a partnership with Wake County. Where are we in the project and where are we heading? And also share with you the latest cost estimate that has been received for this project. The Polyworks facility is located in Aviation Parkway, pretty much directly across from International Drive, very close to the intersection with McCrimmon and Evans Road. So that's where our current facility is. Here is an aerial picture. I would like to also give you an overview of the property. So on this slide, you will see an overview on the property on the yellow outline, that is the Towne Morrisville property. The Polyworks facility is the area highlighted in red. And also to the south, you will see the two properties that are owned by Wake County, with the convenience center located in the most southern property. The Towne Morrisville property is over 13 acres, with four acres being taken by the Polyworks facility. The Wake County properties is a total of seven acres, with the property where the convenience center is located being four acres. However, they only use a small portion of that facility. To give you a quick roadmap of where we have been and where we are today, the Polyworks facility was built in 1988 with some minor modifications that have been done over time. In 2014, both organizations, Wake County and the Towne Morrisville, engaged into a master plan, but they both did it independently. After the master plan was conducted, both organizations learned about the NC DOT project that impacted both facilities, and in 2007, both Wake County and the Towne Morrisville decided to have a feasibility to consider a joint project. That feasibility study actually revealed that establishing a partnership to do the projects together will be beneficial, and we decided then to continue that partnership through revisions to the MOU. The MOU has already been amended twice. Each of those amendments have has allowed us to move a step further into the design process. The first amendment allowed us to begin the space needs and The first amendment allowed us to begin the space needs and schematic design. The second amendment, which was just approved, um, by you guys on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, allow us to go into the schematic design plus, which is about forty percent of the design. As I mentioned, in two thousand fourteen, um, both entities conducted a master plan. And what that, uh, master plan revealed is that both organizations needed to expand their facilities to be able to keep up with the growth that was occurring in this particular area. NC DOT Aviation Parkway expansion is one of the significant impact to this facility that is also accelerating, um, this, this redevelopment. And I will go into detail in a little bit about what that specific impact is. So the Towne Morrisville and Wake County decided to join efforts and co-locate. Now, the main goal for that co-location of properties is to make sure that both facilities receive the least impact possible while continuing to serve our community. This partnership also provides a great opportunity for us to have some cost sharing through the design, through the permitting, access into the property, utilities, some water, and there's quite a bit of earthwork that is also going to be required that provides a benefit of being able to have a cost sharing. So let me give you some details about that NC, the NC DOT project. Aviation Parkway widening is gonna take place from NC fifty-four all the way through I forty. The winding is gonna go from two lanes to four lane divided, um, which will include bike and pet facilities. The purpose is to address congestion in the area. Um, and through the years, ever since they first notified us of the project being allocated in the transportation plan, there has been several changes to the schedule, um, which now has put, delayed the project to begin right-of-way acquisitions in two thousand twenty-nine and construction anticipated to begin in two thousand thirty-first. And this last, um, update to the schedule is, was last updated this past October. In this map, um, I wanted to give you a quick graphical representation of what that impact looks like. So if you see the inset at the bottom of the slide, you can see the specific snapshot to the Public Works Facility which shows that not only the right-of-way and the eastman for this project pretty much go right through the administration building, but in addition, the intersection improvement has the intersection being realigned. So it pretty much goes through the main, uh, to the far edge of the administration building. Currently, our access into our, um, site is not aligned with the signal and we don't have a signal head that benefits access coming out of our property. So being able to align this intersection provides a great improvement on being able to access in and out of the site. The current status, we have just completed the schematic design, which included a big component on space needs. Um, the preliminary cost estimate has been completed based on the latest layout that was defined with the schematic design. That revised construction cost estimate is now estimated at sixteen million, uh, which includes, uh, revisions to earthwork, retaining wall and a lot of site work. It also includes provisions for building, I, and all the components associated with the building, the utilities, access and sustainability. Now, if we may, uh, I would like to then speak specifically about what are the factors that have directly, um, influenced this increase in cost? The layout that we have now is further developed from what it was previously done. We have invested more efforts into the design to find out more information and being able to have something that reflects more realistically what needs to occur on the site. The facility has been designed for a twenty-year life cycle. We have also incorporated a large number of stakeholders into, early into the process to include the permitting agencies to make sure that we are keeping all of those components involved since the beginning. We have also, um, done a lot more work to determine what will be needed, not only for, for earthwork balancing, but also for stormwater management and flood storage. Both properties, not only the Towne Morrisville property, but also the Wake County property, have a large presence of the flood plain and being able to mitigate that accordingly will help us have a successful project. The initial estimate that was done on this project was very high level and did not include any actual design work. So by us being able to step into that design process has allowed us to have a better picture of what it will entail. Not to also mention that the general construction cost has increased in the region from twenty to thirty percent. And this is, uh, we have received this from the AGC. And we have also seen that in some of our other projects where we have seen some of the construction costs increase. Part of the thing that has also influenced the cost estimate is being able to receive additional information from the NC DOT project. Aviation Parkway is not only going to be widened, but is also going to be raised in elevation, which will require then additional earthwork into our facility that then increases the cost of the project. Where are we heading? Well, we are currently in the process of beginning the schematic design plus, which will take us to forty percent of that design. We will be able to complete that. We are planning to complete that this summer. Then we will engage into the next phase, which will be the conclusion of that, the construction design and the permitting process, which we hope to complete in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. In the winter of two thousand twenty-three, we are hoping to embark on the construction, which we expect that it will take at least two and a half years to make sure that both properties receive the least impact possible while the construction is going on. This is the schematic design concept. I realize that this is a loaded slide, so we have provided that as an additional attachment to your agenda packet. Um, so you should be able to have a full-blown, um, image of this schematic design concept. In essence, what this shows is the portion of the site that is going to be owned by the town and the portion of the site that will be the convenience center and which portion will be the shared, which is, in essence, those associated with the access to the property. Just to pretty much kind of orient you where we are right now, the area that you see in blue, that is where the county facility is shown, is where our current Public Works Facility is. So in essence, we will be building beside us so that we can continue in operation. And then once we can move, then the county facilities will be built and then they will move into the new location. So this is just a big, uh, a quick schematic that we have provided you. So I understand there's a lot of information, so feel free to refer to the full-blown size in your packet. And with that, I will be glad to take any questions.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Okay, I said question, but I lied. I actually have two questions. Um, the roadwork that's gonna occur, um, there on, uh, I believe it's Aviation Parkway, since that's gonna impact one of our buildings, uh, do we get reimbursed in any way for that by anyone?
That's what we would expect. Those conversations with NC DOT has not began yet specifically because the project has been pushed out considerably. But as we get closer to the, uh, right-of-way, uh, process, those conversations will then, uh, take place and, and be defined a lot more. From my perspective, I will expect to see something similar to what we, is going on with some of our other facilities in town.
Well, I guess that my question is because if we start this project as looks likely before they, before they start Aviation Parkway, then the new buildings will be there before the road widening and then our buildings won't be impacted. So we will, will not receive reimbursement. So I just, I'm just calling that out. Um, my other question was, so this facility is gonna have a lifespan of twenty years. What do you anticipate to be the costs? And what do you recommend, um, in savings or, um, uh, special fund, um, funding a special fund for the upgrades and the, the upkeep that would extend the life of the project?
Let me make sure I, I am following through on that question. So you're thinking about providing funds for the facility to be up kept for that timeframe?
Well, I guess I'm asking, in twenty years, we have to do this again and it's gonna cost sixteen million dollars. So do you recommend, um, putting aside a fund like we do for transportation or for, um, capital improvements or additional funds in the capital improvement, um, more than we do now, uh, to, to look ahead basically to that twenty years and have money available? Or are we just assuming that we would do another bond or have, is that part of the conversation yet?
Councilmember Rabadi, I think that that's, Giselle, let me jump in for you. I think that's really more of a Jeannie question and I think we could have that conversation tomorrow as part of her discussion around bonds and budget and financing. Uh, good question, very, very relevant, but I do think that Jeannie is the better person to answer that for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, I agree, Brandon. We will, we will cover really how, how do we get there? And then what do we do, um, when a facility's life cycle reaches its end? How do we do that replacement, uh, and planning for that? So we can talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ral?
Well, my first question was asked about the funding and financing, so we'll, you know, we'll, we'll wait till we hear from Jeannie on that. Um, yeah, Giselle, I'm very supportive of this. I, I think that it's been a long time coming. Um, you know, I think, I wanna thank all the department for all the hardy work. You know, I'm curious as to, you know, as we move forward with these new facilities, how many people at any given time are working inside the, the main Public Works site? I know there's another one also on Church Street, but I'm running the Greenway. I see people going back and forth. Are people working remote, active shifts? Um, after COVID, when we get back to normal, will there be more people coming in at one time? Or has it shifted the way you're moving forward, running the operation?
Currently, we have all of our, uh, Polywork staff working onsite. We have very limited, uh, staff working remotely and they, I have only one employee that works remotely, uh, half, two employees that work remotely half of the week. So all Polywork employees have been here. Uh, we currently have twenty-two employees. Uh, this, the space needs that took effect for this schematic design takes in consideration staff growth over the twenty-year period. So we are accounting for additional staff. In order to continue to provide a collaborative environment for our Polywork staff, the facilities will have enough space to have all staff report to the Polywork facilities. So currently, the facilities that we have or the office, uh, facilities that we have at Church Street at MCP allows for them to have a location to go into throughout the day if they need to have, to, if they need to go to a computer, but doesn't provide enough facilities for them to, for that to be their report place and have a conducive environment for them to be there all day if they needed to be, for example, on a rainy day. So the facilities do account for that as we move, um, through this, uh, life cycle.
Now, uh, the follow-up, I'm just curious. I know Public Works has been, uh, there's been some synergy with our smart city initiatives and, you know, looking at, you know, how we leverage, um, our smart cities plan for, uh, you know, pub, energy efficiency. This, um, and I know Public Works in the past has worked on, you know, working and going on our own buildings, existing buildings, looking at efficiency of, um, you know, ventilation and, uh, uh, heating and air and, um, but in this case, as we build a new facility with Wake County, are we looking at these kinds of technologies, you know, in terms of renewable, you know, efficient, energy efficient buildings, LEED certified and those kinds of things?
Most definitely. Uh, that, that's one of the things that I want to make sure we can show on this Polywork facility is, well, Polywork Department currently manages the sustainability program. So we want to make sure that we can show within our facilities that it's possible to get it done. Uh, one of the components included on the estimate that I provided to you is a sustainability component to make sure that we are accounting for all of those sustainability aspects and initiatives to be incorporated in the facility.
Okay, fantastic. Well, I want this to be a, I think we have a great opportunity to really have this be a marquee, uh, building led by Public Works where people can actually see, not only in Morrisville, but around the region, uh, where, how you do it right. So not, not just set the bar high for you, but I, I believe in you. I know you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Colley?
I love hearing about the sustainability. Um, and I'd hope that that might include solar and electric vehicle charging stations, et cetera. Um, to be clear, we're doing cost share with Wake County. Is the entire sixteen million dollars our responsibility and theirs is on top of that?
That is correct. Based on the current cost estimate, that is correct. Uh, that there is, there, they have a separate estimate for their facilities and ours include the portion that we will be sharing for access. So that sixteen million does include the portion for shared access.
Okay. I recall part of the initial vision for this project was another entrance to Morrisville, I mean, Cedar Fork District Park. Is that still part of this planned vision?
That is one aspect that we are considering heavily to see if it's feasible based on the, we are crossing boundaries not only through the flood plain, but we are also cross, crossing jurisdictional boundaries with Cary. And that is one that we are, that's a factor of the analysis of this process to determine if that is actually feasible.
Okay, um, that is, uh, when all our recreational activities are happening, uh, that one entrance that we have now is problematic, um, and it won't be fixed until the road is widened. So, uh, whatever we can do to make that very feasible and have it happen, I think that will help our, help our town a great deal. Um, I do love how the plans show Greenway access. I think that's gonna be important to keep that in mind as well because Greenway runs right up against the back of what's going on now. Um, and this is a project we've been talking about for many years. And even though the price tag is higher than we expected, um, I'm hopeful and optimistic that our residents see the value of being prepared for disasters. The whole idea of an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Um, I think it's important for us to make investments like this. So thank you very much for a great presentation.
One thing I would like to clarify is while we show, show Greenway access, this access is specifically for maintenance, is not necessarily for public access. So I just, I did wanted to clarify that we currently do have access to the Greenway to be able to get our equipment there to continue to provide maintenance. So we will be preserving that access on the new facilities to make sure that we have direct access for maintenance.
Okay, I just, um, was, I, I drive, I ride by there quite a bit and right now there's a fence. Um, so I see where you have access currently. I'd imagine that this and hopefully all our facilities will be welcoming to residents if they want to come visit. Um, I know the one on Jane Shaxson, uh, the Public Works for Cary is very welcoming. Um, so I'd hope that our, our facilities would be similarly so. So, uh, that there'd be real access for people to come visit our facilities if they wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins, Johnson?
Thank you. Um, I have a few comments that I, I do wanna kind of note about, um, the maintenance of the Greenway and the access of the property to the Greenway. I think it's a safety concern to have the public walk around in the lot with the public safe, or the, all the equipment that is needed to be moved around and maintained. And I, I just think it would be a safety concern to have people walking through that, um, back lot. So I am not in favor of letting the public meander around our, our Public Works facility. Um, maybe there's a, a location where there's electric charging stations or something. That's a different kind of thing, but I, I just wanna be very careful about, um, what we allow and what we don't allow as it relates to this very expensive investment, but very important investment in our town. I have a question about the facility being designed for twenty years. We all know that it's well overdue and, and needs to be, um, you know, made to last longer. Is the proposed design to have a longer life? Um, it's my assumption that this would be the final design because the town is at build-out right now or nearly at build-out?
Yeah, the, the intention is, is to have those components designed for a longer life. We specifically think about 20 year life cycle, thinking about those major components that at some time will require replacement. And also thinking about program growth, we are thinking about 20 years of, of program growth. What space do we need to keep up with, with the services in our town for the next 20 years before we outgrow what, what the facilities look like? But yes, definitely the facilities, I, I think the building shells will, will intend, they will last longer. They will be designed to last longer. But there are major components that at 20 years will be requiring change up. And those are expensive components that need to be taken in consideration. So when we think about the project as a whole, that's why we refer to it to a 20 year cycle.
It's very helpful. And I would imagine that technology changes rapidly today regarding sustainability components. So that 20 years might, for some things, might actually be quicker as, as technology rapidly evolves. So that would be potentially a cost that we would have to account for as we're looking at the reserves for the maintenance of the public works facility. I also wanted to agree with Councilmember Robati about the sequencing. We don't have control of NCDOT and we all know that they had a rather difficult time with their budget with that audit that occurred a couple of years ago, making them suspend a lot of their projects and reprioritize and push out these projects. Of course, that affects aviation today and you mentioned that in your presentation. Are we, maybe this is not you directly, but losing an opportunity to get reimbursed for loss of use of a building is a consideration. Since they moved their plan, are they moving that opportunity as well? So I, I also am concerned about that. But nevertheless, we do need to fund this project. And I'm, I know that it's also in the presentation about, we're going to have a conversation about how that funding model might work. But it's a big ticket item, but a, a good investment for the town. So thank you.
Yeah, well taken. We definitely want to explore the opportunities to be able to secure reimbursement through NCDOT. Actually, the next phase of the project includes conversations with NCDOT as we continue to dive in deeper into the design. So that, that's the point into which we can have that specific conversation. Now that we have a layout, we are able to have the, the specific conversation.
You can show them, right? Good, very good.
And I would also like to, to have a follow up to, to your comment as far as the safety concern coming through the facility. One of the components that we have discussed with Wade County has been the security on the site and being able to keep the site secure at all times. One of the components that I would like to highlight that is important in our public works facilities is not just the equipment moving around the facilities, but the, the equipment that is housed here, especially that for public safety. So there is a lot of equipment that we have in our yard for public safety, specifically for police, that we will like to make sure that is secured at all times.
That's an excellent point. I, I, I think I knew that, but I didn't remember. But you're right, that equipment is very expensive, so. And we, we don't want it to get in the wrong hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Gisele, for this presentation. It's very informative. I just have a concern with the, the location of the public works facility and that, I guess, I, I had no idea that it would encompass such a large area through there. I mean, I knew it was going to be expanding where your existing facility is. I did not know until seeing the site plan, the exact footprint of the facility and how much space it is taking. I've driven along aviation many times and looked over to the right in that area and have noticed that it's been flooded and it's flooded quite often. And I see on this one slide here that, that, I'm guessing this whole area is considered a wetlands area right now?
Right now, there is a, the floodplain that comes very close to our property, actually takes a portion of the back of our property. And actually, if you look at this schematic that I have right here on the slide, if you follow that red line, I know it's hard to see, but that red line is the one, not, not that one, Jeannie, but the dash line, that dash red line is where the floodplain is. And we, as you can see, some of that parking area is actually encroaching into that floodplain for which we need to have some mitigation of some sort. And that's accounted for in the estimate. But we are pretty much very tight where we are. One of the things that I mentioned influenced the cost estimate was that earthwork balancing is in order for us to be able to keep the facility in a safe location with no risk of flooding, is we need to raise the site considerably. There's quite a bit of fill that has to come in, not only to, to keep us away from flooding, but in addition to connect to the access on Aviation Parkway, NCDOT is raising the roadway nearly three feet. So that requires our site to pretty much come up altogether. And as you can imagine, 14 acres coming up almost three feet is a considerable cost into the project. So that has been taken into consideration to make sure that we can, make sure that we consider the potential for flooding in the future.
Okay. I am fairly certain when I've driven along here, I've seen the flooding come a lot further than where, I mean, closer to the road than where this red line is. And I hear you're, you're going to be raising the elevation. I'm just concerned with the amount of area that you've taken up here. I don't disagree that we need this facility and need this expansion. Just a little disheartened to see that it's taken up all, the, the footprint is this large. I mean, was, was there any thought to making the parking lot smaller or? I, I, I don't know. I mean, I understand the predicament your group is in. I just wish that your facility did not need to be here of all places.
I understand.
So I, 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 I don't, I, I don't expect a comment or justification. I understand where your group is coming from. I'm just noting my comments or my thoughts on this.
Before I joined the town, there was, on those initial efforts of the master plan, there was consideration to have the facility located at, at another site. And it was determined that it was not feasible and the best location for the site was here, even though we had so many challenges to maneuver through. The, the space needs that took place as part of the schematic design that we just completed not only took in consideration the growth of the town and us to be able to continue to serve the community, but it also took in consideration staff grow, not only for public works, but also for other departments, given that we provide for fleet service of all town vehicles. And as our police fleet increases or other departments increase their, their personnel, fleet also tends to increase. And that's the reason why the parking count tends to increase beyond what we currently have right now. So taking all those aspects in consideration, pretty much our footprint for the public works facilities is almost double, not quite there, but almost double. I also would like to point out, if, if you see the, the facilities for the convenience center, they have done the same thing. They have expanded to provide additional services that are not provided currently because the convenience center here in Morrisville is one of the ones that they have the highest use. And they want to make sure that they're able to provide that service to the community as well. So, and that influenced the footprint on the, on the facilities.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, thank you, Brandon, and thank you, Gisele. This is a fabulous presentation and this is a project long, long, long overdue. I don't know if we've all had the opportunity to go out to the current, the current location for our public works department and if our, our citizens could go out and visit, I think they would be very surprised. The facility, I remember the days when there was no air conditioning or little air conditioning in that facility. So you all have done a fabulous job over the years, working in the building that you're in, and this is just not acceptable for our employees anymore. I, I tell you, there, there are many things I'm proud of over the years. When we moved the fire department from the old location at the corner of 54 and Morrisville Carpenter to the new Fire Station 1, I was thrilled. I was incredibly proud of that. I am going to be incredibly proud one day when, when, when this facility is built and, and our employees have the facility that they all deserve. So I, I'm looking forward to this. I will say just a couple of quick comments. I'll try not to repeat everything that is said because a lot of good comments made. I, I am just disappointed in the Aviation Parkway project and how delayed it is. I, I, that really is, it's pretty devastating, I think is the only word I can think of. We knew it was going to be pushed back with all the, the problems with NCDOT. I guess, you know, I, I like to be positive and wishful thinking and hopeful and I, I'm going to hope that maybe one day that project will be moved forward a little more. But we can't wait around for them unfortunately. And that, that, that pains me to say that because we cannot wait another, what, not eight years for them to, to, to begin right away? So anyhow, I, I think the one, two, one question I have is where the current convenience center is now over to the left side of the property, what will happen with that? I know TJ asked about the entrance to the park and you answered that. What else is that? Is that just intended to remain open space then and not used?
That section, if you look at the map on the screen right now, is right, right here where it says storm debris at a 15 convenience center. So that is one of the options that we have on the table right now is, given that the facility is used for a convenience center right now, with, that, that piece of land is actually in the jurisdiction of Cary. So we have conversations with them to try to then convert that to a storm debris location in which we can put the storm debris there, temporary storm debris storage, because it is a similar use of what's currently there. So the permitting is a lot easier. So that's, that's the, the proposal on the table right now. As we go further into the design, we'll determine if that's the best alternative. Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, thank you. And then the only other, I, the only other thing I really want to echo is this whole conversation we've been having about the lifespan of the building. And yeah, 20 years, if we can, if we can, yeah, figure out a way to make that lifespan a little longer and, and then, and I don't know if this is even feasible, possible, but when we design a building like this, is it possible to, to design it with the option sometime, you know, in the future, 20, 30 years from now, that it can be added on to? That a second story can be added? Or are there things that we can, we can do today when we design a building that will allow it to adapt to future renovation and expansion? And you don't have to answer that now. I, I'm not even sure if that's even possible to do. But it, it just seems that, you know, we always do our very, very best to estimate for the future and things change. And, and we, it would be nice to be able to, if the need arises to expand, you know, like I said, in the 20 or 30 year timeframe, if we think about that today, savings for down the road. So that is, I'm looking at my notes, those are all my questions I have now, but I'm looking forward to this needed, needed, needed desperately. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to point out, just a follow up to that, the building currently accounts, this building right here, as I'm pointing out with my cursor, is a two, a two story building. We have 75% of that footprint that is going to be a two story, allowing us an additional 25% for expansion in the future.
Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, no, thanks, Gisele. My question was, you know, the same thing because I guess the council had approved a million dollars, right, for the site design and, and the planning for it. And it was a very good investment. I am happy because to be very honest, when we saw, a couple of times I came by when the snowstorms and like with your predecessor, like, you know, Blair, is, that place is hard to stay, you know, eight hours. And, but the kind of affection and, you know, you guys work together makes me always feel like, you know, if an option given to me, I would not work there, you know? But I, I, I'll be honest, and, but the amount of work that you guys do for the town, I think you guys need to be treated well. And so I'm also looking forward for this project. So the storm debris, right, what does that mean? I'm trying to visualize in my mind, what does it really mean to us?
What that means is, let's say, for example, we were to have a thunderstorm right now. If we were to have a thunderstorm and we have to go cut some trees or pick up some branches, what we do is we bring those into our yard and we prepare, we do like a stockpile and we keep them there until we have enough to be able to take them down to the landfill. We are not able, while we are in recovery mode, we need to have a lay down area which we can start storing stuff until we have cleared the emergency and then we start, we can take, take things to the landfill. So that's pretty much the area that's going to be used for is when you have those temporary storage to be able to go into recovery mode for storms.
Okay, got it because, okay, now that makes sense. All right, thank you very much and looking forward for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Colley.
Thank you very much. So a lot of support has gone into this and we, as was just noted, we spent a million dollars on design. At this point, now that we have the cost estimates, I'd be very curious if there's any possibility to just do a really high level assessment. I don't want to set us back. I don't want to slow us down. But if, for example, just moving the earth costs the same as it would cost to buy 14 acres in town, I'd be very curious to see if we could do a reassessment. It was mentioned that we looked at the master plan and this was the best site. Is this still the best site for this facility?
I'm sure we can discuss that internally and, and then get back with council.
Because that's just a question that we're going to have to answer the residents. So I'd like to have that information handy. Thank you very much. I'm fully supportive of the project, the location and the new cost are just what I want to be able to answer the residents about. Thank you.
Yeah, and this location also, as I, as I noted at the beginning of the presentation, provides, one of the big plus is the potential partnership with Wade County at this particular location that not only allows us to have a public works facility that enables us to better serve our community, but it also allows Wade County to be able to expand the convenience center so that they can better serve the community. So it's like a win-win for both organization and that's what, that's what waited heavily on the feasibility study that determined this location to be the best location at this. this time. Uh, we can finally discuss that further internally if, if, uh, if needed.
And another concern is, uh, down the road, when they're widening aviation, um, it's gonna be trouble with ingress and egress as well, so just trying to get in front of that future problem as well.
Mm-huh.
Mayor, I believe that concludes the presentation that we have, Giselle. Any final comments you'd like to offer?
I would just like to say thank you very much for the opportunity today. Uh, it is a pleasure to serve you and serve the community. Um, I, I can tell you, staff, while they will love to have, uh, a new facility, the, the work that they provide to the community will, will continue to be, uh, the same, and they will continue to be eager to come to work every day. And we appreciate your support.
All right, I think we're at, wrap up. Martha, anything?
No, Mayor, we are done for the day. I think you've gotten off to a fantastic start. Uh, I, I think you should be pleased with yourselves, and staff is pleased with you. Uh, I'm gonna turn it back over to the mayor.
Just making sure I'm not muted there. Um, I would echo that. I think that everyone did a lot of good work today. Thank you very much for staff for the presentations and providing us all the information that we needed to in advance. Um, at this time, I'd like to say that, uh, we will be reconvening tomorrow, Saturday February twenty-seventh, at eight-thirty PM. We're gonna be trying to sign in by eight-fifteen AM. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and a second to go into recess. I'd like to recognize councilmember Robati.
I make a motion that we go into recess until eight-fifteen tomorrow morning.
Okay, I have a motion. Thank you, I have a motion on the table. I'd like to recognize councilmember Fender, please.
Second.
Okay. I would ask, uh, town clerk Smith to take a roll call vote on our motion to go into recess until tomorrow morning at eight-thirty AM.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to recess passes the morning.
Thank you all very much. It's five-twenty-three, we are in recess. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Yeah, good job, everybody. Give us something.
Need more morning.
Yeah.